This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Schumaker, if you'd go ahead and read off the names of the people that are present.
Chris is assisting Bill Guy in order to get onto the meeting.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, Tony, you're on. Supervisor Tinkle is on. Supervisor Banks is on. Supervisor Feinberg is on. We're waiting the arrival of Supervisor Guy. Supervisor Flaherty is on, and the district manager, Chris Schumaker, is helping Mr. Guy. So...
I don't see Doug.
He was on earlier.
There he is. Okay. Had to go farther down the line. Hi, Doug.
So with that, is Mr. Schumaker back yet?
Nope.
No. Tony, well, let's go ahead and do the Pledge of the Allegiance. We'll start here. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, just as it is.
Wait a couple minutes to see if Mr. Schumaker can get Mr. Guy on.
He should be on momentarily.
Okay.
And in the audience, we have Danny Nelson, Tyler is on, Flavia is on, Mr. Rod Senior, Warren Davies, John Grega, Steve Blum, and Bill Measy.
Okay, thank you.
If nothing else, one thing I've learned is different devices have different camera angles. My laptop versus my iPad because where the cameras located. So it makes life kind of interesting.
That is true.
We're just trying to get back to Mr. Guy. I thought he was ready to go on with the code. Give us one more minute, please. Mr. Gump.
Hello.
Is everybody else? I'm hearing Chris muffled.
How about right now?
Yeah.
You sound like you're in a tunnel.
You sound like you're in a tunnel. Yeah.
Any better than this microphone?
Little bit. Is Kenny there?
Yes.
Ask Kenny to talk, see if his does it.
Hello?
Both of you sound the same. It just must be the deal.
Were you waiting on something?
We're waiting on Mr. Guy. He was supposed to be trying to sign into the meeting. So I was going to give him a couple of minutes and then...
Our HOA meeting this morning went six minutes late because we had one board member on a meeting in Tampa that he wasn't supposed to be in on.
Oh, no.
He couldn't figure out what they were talking about.
That's too funny. Was he able to participate? They appreciate his input?
If they did, they wouldn't have understood it. He was a psychologist. Is Russ on?
Somebody just got on.
Didn't see Russ.
Is that Ms.?
No. No, it's Kathy. It looks like she's on two places.
You only get one vote, Kathy.
Just pretend it's Indiana. Yeah, I think the one Kathy's went off.
Okay. Chris, did you get a hold of Mr. Guy?
Yeah, I talked to him. Leslie's talking to him right now on the phone.
Okay, let's go ahead and start. Tony, I think you were gonna... Before I do that, wait a minute. I think for input and questions and any voting, let's continue with the same format that we've done previously.
Yeah, the board has that resolution. Yeah, Madam Chair, and for the record, it's Resolution 20-5 that the board adopted.
And that was Supervisor Flaherty, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Tinkle, and then Supervisor Feinberg last. If we continue using that format for input, questions, and voting, it makes it a lot easier to understand what we're doing. So I think we should go ahead and continue with that.
Yes, and Madam Chair, that is what the board approved under Resolution 20-5. And the district manager will generally do that, call upon each board member separately and then call the roll so that there is that decorum.
And I think that's an excellent way. It's worked quite well.
Yes.
Now, we've got the, starting this meeting with the public hearing. And I assume we need to open the public hearing, Tony, or do you want to give us any advice prior to that?
Initially, for the record, and I have a copy I'll put in the minutes, the notice of a meeting and public hearing in this matter was published in the Fort Myers News Press on April 19, 2020. And prior to that time, there had been notices published in the paper that meetings of the board may be by remote or communications media technology. And the agenda that's been put together by the manager has, since that time, provided a go-to-meeting access portal and also a process by which members of the community or interested parties anywhere, quite frankly, are able to provide their comments in advance and/or during the course of the meeting. I think Mr. Senior, last meeting, using the chat feature, was able to successfully bring matters to the board's attention. That turned out to be a very, very good application of the go-to-meeting process. I would suggest, is Russ available? Is he on?
I do not see him on. Mr. Guy is... Let's see here.
I just saw Bill.
Yeah, Mr. Guy is on. Hello, Mr. Guy?
What I would suggest, Madam Chair, is to contact Russ, find out where he might be, and go on from... Just pause the meeting for a moment, a brief recess in place, so to speak. And Chris, have you heard from Russ today?
No, I didn't. But I'll go send him an email.
Would... Are we going to take the comments from the audience or from the field here before or before and after the presentation? We might buy some time if we take audience comments now.
Yeah, and if that's the board's choice, I would also suggest that that anyone who made comments before the presentation be allowed to make comments after the presentation also.
I would agree.
So you may want to wait.
Yeah, I have no problem. Do we need to open the public hearing officially to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you hear comments?
Yes. Yes, that would be in order.
You don't need a motion.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes, I'd like to. I think that's a clean way to do that.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Aye.
Mr. Guy? Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mr. Tinkle?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. I'm sorry, I just disconnected and reconnected without doing it myself. I don't know what my computer did. So everyone can hear me okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. And who did we have that wanted to make comments?
Yeah, you want to unmute everybody and I'll start? I'll start with public comments, just on the list. I don't have any direct chats. And the only person that asked to be on the list to address it was Jim Wazinski from Silver Legs, but he is on at the present time. So I will start at the top. The assessment methodology. Flavia, see, you're at the top of the list. Do you have any comments on the assessment methodology?
I don't have any comments on that. However, I know Jim, he's trying to log in and he's having some issues. So he asked me to relay the message that he does want to speak. He just asked for a few more minutes.
Okay, yeah, I sent him the invite earlier today. I'll log in. Thank you. Mr. Grega, any comments on the assessment methodology?
Oh.
Okay. Warren Davies?
No, thank you.
Mr. Measy?
No.
No?
No.
Mr. Senior?
Chris or Madam Chair, may I just have a moment?
Yeah.
What I would suggest is...
Yes.
What I would suggest, the way the agenda was put together appropriately so indicated that the public hearing may be extended to June 4th or later days due to restrictions on public gatherings related to COVID-19. One of the concerns I've expressed, and we've had some indications, is with regards to the ability or inability of the public to fully comment and participate in a meaningful way, even though the district is making all these efforts to have it as accessible as possible through the remote meeting, the communication media technology. And there are glitches, electronic glitches, and what I would suggest is that that the announcement be made that this meeting, again, the meeting may be continued, but we, that the board encourages any and all comments today and that any and all comments today will be taken into account at a future meeting if that person is unable to attend or participate. And they will be made part of the record.
And Tony, can I add to that in an effort to give the public every opportunity to speak today? If you've joined either by phone or through web conferencing, you'll have the opportunity to speak. For some reason, if you're experiencing an issue, you can email Chris and he can state your comments. So Chris, if you wouldn't mind just making sure that everyone has your email address. So during the meeting, if there's an issue, they can just email you directly and you can read it out loud. So Tony, I just want to make sure that there were, there's multiple opportunities for the public to get their voice or communication read or heard during this meeting.
Absolutely. And when we placed the amended notice of the meeting of the meetings for the rest of the year or for a period of time during this emergency, I think the various methods and mechanisms for public participation was provided. Fax, email, direct mailing, and/or the chat or other ways. And that is encouraged, and that's an excellent point.
I might add that, I don't know if you all know, have some other knowledge that I don't have, but I'm not seeing that in our future that we're going to be doing anything different than this for a long time. So delaying this to have a second meeting, when at least in the part of Gateway Greens, a notice went out to our 1,400 residents of this meeting, and I would think that that would be more than enough for sufficient notice to go on ahead and continue this discussion.
There was also a notice included in the utility bills mailed out last week. And we also did an email blast to all the HOAs and PR.
I don't know how many other supervisors received calls, but I have talked to one heck of a lot of people, not the least of which, at least an hour and a half to two hours with Jim Wazinski, who's going to be online here shortly the other night. So the word is on the street. People know about this. Those that want to participate and/or have an issue have had more than ample time to be able to do so.
Great.
I have talked to a number of people, and I'm not sure that I completely agree with you. I know that people have the ability to log into this meeting and they have the ability to send an email, but I don't think that, at least the people I've talked to, don't think that they've had adequate enough time to actually study this and understand it. And they're very confused and very concerned. So I just want to throw that out there. I agree with you that everybody's aware.
Yeah, my concern, I've expressed it, is that to the extent that there's an inability of people to fully participate, that that gives an opportunity for someone to provide a challenge it. Now, also recognizing that this is, if the board approves this methodology, whether today or two weeks from now, that methodology is what will be utilized in establishing or approving, quote unquote, the budget for purposes of setting the public hearing in August. And then for that public hearing in August, there will be a separate mail notice to each property owner of this assessment methodology being utilized because it will be considered a new assessment as well as the large ads in the newspaper. So that would occur, as we've done in the past, when we've increased assessments or changed their purpose, had the separate mail notices to each unit owner or property owner, as well as the big ads in the paper. That would also still take place for the August budget adoption meeting.
The biggest problem I've ran into with people calling me are asking the question, this does not match what is on their tax records. And this is what I have argued about since day one. We didn't have anywhere in this document that acknowledges the debt component share of the SR program is not included in this. This is only the operation cost of operating the district. And so a lot of people are trying to understand, oh, we're having a reduction from 600 and something to 554. That is not the case. That $78 surcharge is going to be added to whatever number we come up with as a result of the 2021 budget. And everybody I've talked to understood that after you talked to them.
By the way, Chris, is Russ on yet?
No, I haven't seen him. Come on, send him an email.
Excuse me. May I talk? Hello?
Yeah, Chris, I don't know if you heard, we were going to do the discussion or input in the same format going Supervisor Flaherty, Supervisor Guy, Supervisor Banks, Supervisor Tinkle, Supervisor Feinberg. So they should be called in that order.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mrs. Flaherty.
I agree with Margaret. People have not had a chance to really look at this. They received it last week in their mailing. And I know it did go out to an email to the residents, but I think they need a little bit more time to understand it. And I've heard some several questions from residents that it's a little bit complicated.
Hey, just for the record, Chris, is there, have you received any inquiries from residents pertaining to needing additional input or having questions to the methodology that you have not been able to respond to?
No, we've been keeping a list of the comments that came in, and I'll pull that file up. They weren't asking questions about it. They were just expressing their opinions about it.
Okay, but there's no outstanding inquiries from any resident requesting additional information that we have not replied back to?
No, and what we've gotten from email and referrals from, some comments that came in, and they really were comments, not asking for additional information. They were either pro or con. And... Mr. Banks' question, and Mr. Tinkle, you're in line for comments.
I'm sorry, Chris.
You're in line for comments next, and for Supervisor Banks.
Well, I don't see that we have done anything differently than we have done before. In fact, I think we've gone well beyond by notifying everybody through the HOAs. I haven't asked, haven't polled, but did Stony Brook, did all the other HOAs publish and get the information out, including your letter, Chris? Because I got a few phone calls from it, but most of them were of the the nature as to why are we doing this once they hear how inept the system we had before was and unfair? I didn't have any other questions. Now, I did, with the exception of when Jim Wazinski and I talked, and I don't want to say anything for him. I'll let him talk when he gets a chance. But Jim and I had a long, long, long discussion the other night, and he's got some valid deals. But most of them come down to why are we limiting this just to three classifications? I.e., single-family, multifamily, and commercial, when we have widows, we have people who are seasonal, and all of those others. And my thing is, is if somebody, and I will announce this clearly, if somebody is looking for a perfect assessment methodology, you ain't going to find it on this earth. It isn't going to happen. We have got an assessment methodology, which in my opinion, and I believe that of the consultant, is one that would test and be able to withstand a test of any legal action. It's fair and it's equitable.
Did Mr. Guy get an opportunity to comment?
Not yet.
Bring him up. Mr. Guy, comments?
I'm sorry?
If you have any comments, we're just taking open comments from the board members.
My comments pretty much echo from two weeks ago, but since that time, there have been inconsistencies or inaccuracies uncovered in the work that we have been given to the point where I feel that even if it were fair and equitable, I don't accept that, by the way, that there are a lot of questions in people's minds that may not have been raised yet, but certainly will be as we go along, and that we're trying to tough this big change into a very small time box. And I think it's a big mistake.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. I have issues, I have the same issues that Mr. Guy has, that there have been inconsistencies and things that needed to be corrected in this. And I also have the concern that our consultant isn't available for our public hearing. So no one would get an opportunity to ask him any questions from the public. He's not here to give his presentation. And we don't have a, this is not an open public hearing where people can actually come in if they wanted to. Not everybody may be available at this time. I just, I have real reservations about at least not delaying this and trying to come up with a venue where we can actually have an open public hearing. But to me, this almost seems like it's not quite ready for primetime. We're trying to force something down the community's throat with very little time. If we'd have gotten this in January and we'd have had months to vet it out and make sure everyone understood it, that would be one thing. But that's not what happened here.
Madam Chair, you delayed it a year ago. You delayed it two years ago.
Let me finish. I'm speaking. This was, I agree that this is, it's not our fault. It's not the supervisor's fault. We didn't get the product to work with it in time. But to try and rush this through and hope that it's 100% accurate, I do really have problems with that.
Okay, can you refer to what the inconsistencies are? I have not heard any inconsistency whatsoever. What do you know that I don't know?
Part of it had to be corrected because there were, there was an error in how a section of the community was categorized.
I don't know what you're talking about.
That only showed up after it went out into the public.
Can you be more specific? The only thing that I'm aware of is that our consultant, doing his job, found out that the development order referred to some of our communities that they were not single-family, or they, I'm sorry, they were not multifamily, but they were by definition, single-family. That to me is an error. That's finding out new information to correct the report. And it didn't mount to a hill of beans. What else are you talking about?
Madam Chair, what I would suggest is that, as the board laid out a process, as Chair referenced it earlier in the resolution, where after a board member makes a comment, then the manager will go back down through the board members and ask for any comments the prior member had made. But in addition, Mr. Wire, Chris, is he on? He says he was trying to get on or trying to ask your permission to get in.
I sent him the digital invite.
Yeah, because he sent a response at 3:23, said, waiting for you to accept him.
So, and Tony, sorry to interject, but it seems like that's happening to a couple of people. I think Jim also, when accessing, he's getting a prompt that Chris has to accept. So, which I'm not sure how they're coming in, and why that's different, because no one else has to have any type of accept approval. So it sounds like Russ has something to do with Chris having to accept. I think Jim is having the same issue, so...
I know that I had an issue. I kind of went off. I had to go back on it.
And there is no acceptance at this end. It's just joining the meeting and putting the code in. And the site to go to is on the board agenda, and also invitations that are sent out.
Did someone just arrive?
No, I'll go resend the invites to both of them.
Yep. And Madam Chair, I think there might be a workaround for Jim. If the board permits, I think he can basically have his audio come through Flavia's connection. Flavia, confirm that.
Yeah, I can try. I have him on speaker. I don't know if he's going to echo too much. I don't know if this is easier, or maybe if he can call the conference call number on the boardroom. So Jim, can you talk and see if they can hear you?
Can I what?
Can you talk if they can hear you?
Can anybody hear me?
Barely.
Just try to hold it as close to the microphone as you can.
They can hear you, so go ahead, Jim.
I can't hear anything.
They can hear you.
Okay, let me start. This is Jim Wizniewski from Silver Lakes. I wanted to give you a little bit of background, I've been looking at this for over a month now, and it's had some records requests in, which haven't been really fulfilled yet. Just to give you some background, I'm a CPA, I've been 32 years, one of the biggest accounting advisory firms in the world, and I ended up developing and descending cost allocation models like this for big multinational enterprises for international tax purposes, to resolve tax controversies. These were done and looked at at the highest levels of the governments, because we're entering into international tax agreements. It was basically the same thing you're doing here. All you're doing here is you're taking costs, and you're putting them into buckets for purposes of assessing taxes, and that's, even though the ones I was doing had four zeros behind the number, thousands of cost centers, and dozens of allocation keys and whatnot, the philosophy and everything, the standard for doing this is the same. You're looking at the appropriateness of the policy, the integrity, the assumptions, the viability of the data, relevance of the allocation keys and our execution, and reliability of any adjustments that you make for deficiencies in assumptions, data, and keys. I wrote a request a couple of weeks ago, and I haven't had any response or any, I did get a preliminary Excel workbook from Chris, but apparently it was preliminary, after I went through it, I found all kinds of things, put in a calculation error that needed, a calculation for the water management thing, allocation wrong for every single, single-family home in the district. I didn't get a response, I finally connected with that Tinkle a couple days ago, when he gave you some background and resolved some of the issues. He contacted the rest of the calculation issue, which had been already found and corrected, but I still need all the requested materials, because a lot of the concerns I have have not been addressed yet. But let me, just from my background, let me give you my overview of this. Overall, I think this is what I would call overcooked. It's just, there's an inconsistency between the philosophies, the policy, the execution, one of the allocation keys in particular, but it's fairly unreliable. It may be that this is the case because there was marching orders to your consultant to push this down to the individual property level, it wouldn't pace, we have to do some strange things to get there, but that doesn't mean that it's reliable, just as you see the property-by-property allocation is all over the place, and really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. On the other hand, the data in the model is really good, it's really organized, source is clear, calculation strings are clear, and I think one of the key things is they correctly rejected doing a property-by-property allocation, because it is all over the place, and suggest that a neighborhood or a community-by-community allocation, which I think is the right way to go with this. Now, that being said, that let the cat out of the bat. I'll tell you, a lot of people have been suspicious for a long time that the method that was being used resulted in communities over on the east side of Gateway Boulevard, where we're subsidizing Gateway Greens, and if you look at Appendix B in the report, that is exactly what they showed. And now, everybody, you know, everybody has this now, it's been blasted out to the HOAs, and they forward it to their community members, and they all see this. And I think that, you know, if this is going to be a fair allocation, which is one of the goals of this is, this is where it needs to stop. Assessment needs to stop at the neighborhood level, because if you look at this, for instance, Silver Lakes and Crystal Park, they should be paying in the terminal 27 bucks, you know, and it's similar for other ones on this, the Timberwood, 24, Cypress K, all that. On the other hand, Gateway Greens, you've got Hampton Greens at $298, Mahogany Run South $136, $140 for Mahogany Run North, Cypress Links $158. If you blend all these together, which is what was done at the end of the report, and it was almost kind of like a second products team, like, you're essentially, this isn't fair. You're essentially having all of these communities with small adjustments subsidizing the Gateway Greens communities, and that truly, truly isn't fair for somebody in Silver Lakes to be paying, you know, more than double, one and a half times what they should be, just so, you know, Mahogany Run North can pay half of what they should, and that just really isn't fair. Now, I understand, you know, you don't want to have civil war in Gateway Greens, and so I would suggest, and I told this to Ed when I talked to him earlier, that you should combine all of Gateway Greens together, and just whatever the blend you're ready for Gateway Greens is to not have a civil war going on now. So, that's as a preliminary, kind of top-line thing. One of the things I asked for, and I still haven't seen, I thought I got it resolved with that, but I don't, is the initial allocation between the enterprise fund and the general funds. That apparently was done a year ago, and I was led to believe that it was done, you know, by the staff in the accounting firm, but now when I look at the report again, there's no, usually you just note that in your report, abusing somebody else's work, but it wasn't done, it looks like the consultant did it themselves, so that, I mean, that obviously threw 1.1 million bucks into the pot, and really needs to be looked at to make sure that it was done correctly. It's really not described in the report, it just says time that the data was used, which is the right thing to do, but I wasn't, you know, so, of course.
Open Chrome.
Sorry?
No, I think it's just background.
Okay, let me just finish up here. The overall philosophy in the policies, you know, for the admin parks and rest of the roads seems to be, look, we have to maintain this for everybody, whether you use it or not is your, you know, your decision, and it's just like an HOA. I pay my HOA fees, I never use the pool here, because I have my own pool, I never use the fitness center, because I have my own treadmill, so, I mean, that all makes sense, but the issue with the roads, you say that, you know, it's 101, you can't, everybody, we drop to how much you use, it's to pay the same, and then turn around and say, well, all, you know, multi-family can pay less. And that opens a can of worms, a big can of worms. The biggest complaint I hear from people around here, you know, that are calling me and talking to me, is, hey, my house is not occupied for eight months of the year, there's no way on earth I'd be 9.52 trips per day, and that needs to be adjusted. I asked for the manual where that number came from, and I haven't received it yet, and I, you know, there's, you know, all I wanted to actually was the chapter where it came from, I mean, the whole manual, and I've volunteered to come in and read it in person, if there's, you know, concerns about copyright or something like that, but, no, it's, if the concept around that, and the assumptions around that number, as well as the multi-family number, were something along these lines. If it was, for instance, I don't know what it is or isn't, because I haven't seen it, but if it was said, okay, this assumes a single-family detached residence with four occupants, both spouses working, and two cars occupied 50 weeks of the year. If that's the assumption that went into developing that, you know, 9.52 number, that is correct for where I live up north, but it is absolutely wrong for down here, and without being adjusted. So, it needs to be adjusted, and the way around this isn't perhaps to adjust it, it is to put it in, lump in the road, the parks and wrecks, because the policy for both is the same, we need to maintain it for everybody, no matter how much you use it. You can avoid that can of worms, yeah, but I'll tell you, if you open the can of worms on the roadside, and you will, with this, you're going to open the can of worms on the parks and wreck side, where people say, hey, I'm 75 years old, I got no kids, I'm going to use the parks, and that needs to be avoided, you know, pretty much at all across, you don't want to get into that discussion. So, I would recommend that the roads get allocated the same way, old admin parks and wrecks across the board. About stormwater, I didn't even know what to make out with this. If you look at the report, the report says, you know, the impervious area, and then it says specifically, impervious surfaces, total amount of water, the percolating rate at 100% slow into the water management system. And that statement, of course, is correct, but when you look at the allocation, the impervious surfaces in every single one of these communities is ignored, it's not even mentioned, which is the street from the parking lots. Instead, it's looking at, it's looking at the build dates, basically, and the lanis and all that, and it's saying that anything that hits the roof, or hits your lanai, or hits your pool, or hits anywhere on your property other than the grass, is impervious 100% of the, goes into the stormwater system, which of course is wrong. I mean, the water hits your roof, and if you don't have gutters, it rolls right off the side, right into the dirt, you know, and if you do have gutters and downspouts, they should go out to the sides and the yard, but don't go into the street, and, you know, if it falls in your lanai, if it goes in your pool, where it goes nowhere, or it just just drinks out onto the side, into a pervious surface. So, honestly, the only thing I can think of is they were trying to use this as a proxy for streets, because they had to push it down to the individual lot level, but I think that whole individual lot level thing has been discounted now, and I don't think anyone really thinks that it should be used. So, there's a very simple way to do this, then, is to simply take the acreage of all of the streets and the parking lots in the community, take that, the information is there, then just multiply the total of acreage of all of the residential lots by 20%, that information's already, that number's already in the spreadsheet, so it's not a whole lot here, it's just a little bit of formatting, it has to be done, and that's your acreage for the purposes of the allocation, and then you do that for the rest of the communities here, that are in Appendix B, both the single-family and the multi-family, and you come up with a number, and then you just use that as a percentage. So, you know, Silver Lakes has 5% of the total acreage of streets, plus, you know, 20% of the lots, then 5% of the road's cost goes to Silver Lakes, and the same thing for everybody. And that would be actually a far more accurate way to do it, not, you know, drilling it down anywhere to the individual house, but I think that's been abandoned already, it's really unworkable. So, that would be, you know, a far, you know, better way, I think, in my opinion, is to do it. So, yeah, summarizing, at the end, I would try to make this simpler and more transparent, trying to explain the current stormwater thing. I tried to explain it to five people, four of them got tied, glassed over, the other guy, who was a financial executive at a big company, said, this is outrageous, and left it at that. So, I would try to simplify this as much as you can. Don't open cans of worms that grow allocation that differentiates between single-family and multi-family, you're opening a can of worms here, if you don't want to do it, and just do a simple calculation for stormwater and keep it, neighborhood assessments like shown in Appendix B. Now that Appendix B is out there in the wild, everybody sees it, and everybody's business for all these years have now been essentially verified, so I think Appendix B is the way to go, it doesn't subsidize anyone, everybody takes their fair share, which was not the case before, obviously, and if you combine everybody together now, they're not paying with fair share here. So, that's basically it, my own last comment is, please, I will put another request in a row, please, if somebody responds to my records request, it has been over two weeks now. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have anyone else that wanted to speak, Chris?
No, Russ has joined us, he is online now.
And before Russ speaks, I just want to let you know, I'm hearing from people that they are having trouble logging in, they're having trouble signing on, so we would have more participants, I'm not sure what the issues are, but I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
They should be gold clicking on from the link directly from the website.
Yes, they should be clicking on the link, you know, directly from the website, it has a join and the nine-digit code.
Your settings with their browser, you know, not be allowing, but everyone that we, that I've walked through, it's going to get on.
And we do not show any stats or any requests for comments.
Okay.
Guys, sorry, I just, I just asked Jim what was the message that he was getting, and he says that he logged in both via phone and on the computer, and both said that waiting for Chris Shoemaker to log in, so maybe Chris has to log in from another device, I'm not quite sure, but that's the message that he was getting on both, that he was waiting for Chris Shoemaker to log in.
Hello, this is Leslie. If anyone who's having issues with signing on to the meeting, they should just open up a web browser and type in, go to meeting.com, join meeting, and then enter the meeting ID number. We have not had any issues with doing that from clicking the link, or doing that step directly from the website.
Thank you, Leslie.
We have a chat. And another comment was, you could download the app on your...
I believe Russ has finally joined us, so, Russ, do you want to make any comments or a little presentation or anything?
Margaret, or Mrs. Chairman, sorry, this is, yeah, this is Russ Wire. Sorry, I didn't get hooked up, I've been waiting since 3 o'clock, but I guess I finally figured out, they finally helped me how to get on. So, I didn't get a chance to hear all of the comments, I did hear the last part of the last gentleman's comments with regard to the water management system, and there are all kinds of ways you can cut that, and one of the things that I wonder about is, how would we handle a commercial lot which really has no roads? Would we make that all 20%, which I don't think is right? So, as far as the roads are concerned, I mean, that's actually, to me, a part of the water management system as well, because it comes off the lot and goes into the road, goes into the storm sewer, goes into the lake, so you're, again, assessing your, you're part of your water management system essentially, which is the stormwater drainage. I did not hear about the traffic part, and I assume there was nothing wrong with the administrative part, but that's, I mean, I don't know if really, to give you a presentation, we've done, everybody knows how it's done now, and the methodology is out there, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Russ, I still think it'd be worthwhile, I always find that it's always helpful to not assume everyone knows everything. I would suggest, you know, there's an executive summary in the agenda packet, but I think it'd be helpful for those who may be new to this revised assessment methodology approach to, again, you went through the background in your executive summary, the background, and then your approach, but I think it'd be helpful if you go, you know, if nothing else, summarize the summary, and then maybe Mr. Wizniewski, who had some particular concerns on particular topics, could reiterate in a bullet point fashion, sort of, the concerns, for example, the question about trip generation when people are seasonal, because I know, for example, the DIS-ITE, when they do traffic impact statements for development, they don't determine whether it's seasonal or not, they look at the product mix to generally analyze that, and there might be some other adjustments, but if you could, I would suggest, Madam Chairman, that Russ do that, go through his summary, and then maybe if the Chair is agreeable, have Chris ask Mr. Wizniewski to go back to sort of, in a summary, his concerns.
And then, I think we need to run back through each one of the supervisors and see if they have questions at this point for Russ, also.
Yes, and I apologize, that's not to the exclusion of the board members, you're correct.
And, Madam Chairman, if I can add one thing in Russ's overview, I think it's going to be important to at least describe the high-level overview that the methodology was based on, and I'm sure there was several different ways we could have reached the preferred methodology that we did, but were there also some assumptions that were made, and those assumptions could have been based on fact, but that influenced the direction of the methodology.
Okay, everybody ready? Everybody ready?
Go through comments.
Yeah.
Sure, okay, we'll start with Supervisor Flaherty. Comments, questions?
Russ to go first?
Yeah, well, Chris, we were asking Russ to just give a brief summary.
Okay.
Okay, basically, the methodology itself originally, in 2018, which is almost now two years, the district had enlisted my company to review the current and historical operations and maintenance specialist methodology, and if appropriate, recommend revisions to the methodology. As the district's water and wastewater utilities operations are not funded by these assessments, I did not perform any analysis on the water and wastewater utilities. I took a look, first of all, I took a look at the old methodology. And, you know, that methodology's been in place for 30 years. And when it originally started, when we originally had it, it was based purely on water management, which made sense, because that's all the property was, was water management. It was blank land. So it was, it was based on a water management calculation of residential and commercial. From there, it was supposed to be reviewed every five years. Well, I don't know if they reviewed it or not. I didn't see anything in the minutes that we went back. And it really needed to be adjusted as the development came on. So what my recommendation was to do, first, let me back up a second. I was asked to take a look at it and take a look at the maintenance budgets and see how all of that worked and what categories we had. Then I was to review all of the assessable properties within the district to determine their measurements. I mean, there were some properties that weren't being assessed. We were missing some parcels which we brought into. Then, once I had all of those parcels, you know, determined and decided where they should be, then I went back and took a look at the budget. And the budget was really put into three categories. One was roadway maintenance, which included the landscaping along the roadways and included the irrigation along the roadways. We put it into three categories because it made it easiest to measure the benefits being received from those categories. One is the roadway, and there are a lot of different ways you can do roadways. There are a lot of different methodologies to do that. And one of them could be either measuring the front foot or how much front foot you have on a roadway. Or in this case, it'd be kind of difficult, because most of the roadways are private that are along the front of those houses. So, you know, you're measuring, you live in Mahogany Run South, and you're measuring your roadway, how does that truly impact the roadway out on Gateway Boulevard? So, and I've been doing methodologies now for 15 years. And the Pride and True Way, and I've never really had the problem before, has been based on the International, or not International, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, traffic generation models and studies. They study them all over the place. So that seemed to be a fairly, very reliable method of measurement. And so, and as I said, I've done methodologies all over the place, and it never, every time I've done a roadway, it's always been with ITV rates. Never had a problem with it before. The second part was the water management system. Now, how do you measure that? And what we're trying to do, if you recall, is that we are trying to determine what is the benefit being received from these capital improvements. And so roadways, the benefit received is the number of trips, basically, you put on that road. The water management system is how much water is coming off of your property going into the ultimate drainage program or into the drainage system that goes into the lakes or goes into a lake, how more gets routed around. So that's, that measurement generally is, it can be done a number of different ways. But usually, and what I've done, again, in the past, this has been my, my way of doing it, has been looking at pervious and impervious surfaces. And I use those, they're easy to measure, because I get them from the property appraisal business. So it's already there, the data's already measured. In the case of the commercial, for instance, here in Gateway, they didn't have reliable total building area and heated area and that sort of thing. So I had to go through and measure, individually measure each of the commercial lots to say, "There's a pervious surface, and here was the impervious surfaces." And in their case, you know, they're way up there, like 80, 80, 90% of impervious and maybe 20% of pervious, because of the parking lots and all of that, that good stuff just doesn't, it just drains. And then the last part was the administrative part, which it can be done a number of different ways, but, and I've had people, and I've had other, I've seen other districts do it, where they use equivalent residential units or equivalent assessment units, saying that, you know, a smaller unit, it's a little bit less, a larger unit's a little bit more, and you have the middle of the road. Now, the problem with that is everybody uses the administrative costs equally. You can go to the administrative costs, the administrative person, the other administrative offices, the other resident or homeowner, property owner can go there on an equal basis. Everybody benefits equal from the administrative side of that. But initially, so that's how the overall methodology was done. And if you look over Pelican Reserve, we didn't have any roadways. So basically, over there, it was water management and administrative costs. The, ultimately, in the beginning, what was asked me to do was to take a look at the split between Pelican Reserve and Gateway from those, the administration type of costs. And we thought the best way to do that was to look at the hours and where they are allocated. So we took a look at that, and we ended up finding out that it was like 51% Gateway, 49, 41% Pelican Reserve, and then we split, or it was maybe the other way around. But anyway, then we split the gateway, you know, so it was like 2/3, 1/3, and then we split the gateway a little. So that was done last year, that was adopted last year, the split was adopted last year. We just didn't have the methodology quite ready a year ago when we went into this. So that was done. Then, then it would flow into the, I have the budget amounts. What you do is, it's each property, so I have X number, let me start with the roadway. You start with, your property has a number of trips that come off of the ITVs. And then you add that over, you put it over in the right column, and then you have a total number of trips at the bottom. If you have a 9.52 trips generated per day, that is divided by the total number of units, which gives you a very small percentage. You multiply that percentage by the roadway budget, and that's your assessment for the roadway. In the water management, what we ended up doing was saying, impervious surfaces, like the grooves, the driveway and that, is flowing 100% off into, ultimately over the water and over the pervious surfaces into the lake. They went 100%. And then the other part of it, you have the total acreage for that property, you subtract the impervious surfaces, which gives you a pervious surface. And even pervious surface, a grass or a farm field or whatever, has a flow off of it, which we have determined from, you know, the engineers, and it can vary widely. But in this case, we took a look and kind of hit the middle of the road, maybe a little bit less than the middle of the road, at 20% flowing into the lakes. So then, so you had 100% of whatever your square footage was of the impervious surfaces, and then 20% of the impervious, or the pervious surfaces, you added those two together, and that gave you an acreage, like maybe 0.2 of an acre. So then we added up all of the acreage and then divided that, and you divided your 0.2 or whatever it was, 0.4, 0.3, by the total number of acres, which gave you a percentage. And all that percentage, all the way down, if you added everybody's up, it'd be 100%. We divided or multiplied that percentage by the budget, and that was your water management allocation. And then the administrative side, we would end up, everybody got a 1 for that, we would divide it all the way up, so we had everybody's up, and you would get 1X of whatever that administration was, administrative cost. And that would be your third part. Add it all three together, that's how we ended up getting the assessments. And to me, it was a, you know, it was a, right now, the way, the way you're going with the current methodology, you're measuring the roadway maintenance by water management, you're measuring the administration by a water management measurement, which goes over blank land from 30 years ago, and you're measuring your water management by that. So it made sense to go back, and as I said, I've done a number of these. It follows, it really follows what a debt methodology would be done in terms of how you apportion the debt when you, when you do the bonds and issue that money to put the infrastructure in. So it follows the same principles. So, so basically, that's what we ended up doing. And then rolled them back up into single family and multifamily, and on the Gateway side, and then Pelican Reserve was done the same way, single family, multifamily. And then on top of that, we had the commercial parcels were all done individually because of the way they were measured, and they all had different trip generations. So that's how we got to where we are today. Does that make sense? Anybody have any questions?
Questions?
Go in the order, Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes. We still don't have it 100%. You're still making corrections. Last year, we had the same problem. It was right before the budget. And again, we're getting it right again just before the budget. It just seems to be that there's enough time in between that equipped to us so that we have more time to be able to explain it to everybody. And I don't think it's fair enough.
Supervisor Guy, questions, comments?
Did I hear my name called?
Yes, sir. Questions or comments?
I don't want to be offensive, but if the mission was to reduce the assessment on the golf course and the rest of the trips just fall where they may, you could hardly have done a better job. But when you reduce the assessment on Gateway Golf Course to such as an amount, and at the same time, reduce, excuse me, increasing the assessment on the churches that we have here and on a number of our commercial properties by a big number, you're going to get some pushback sooner or later. And the fact that you haven't gotten it yet surprises me, but I think you're going to get it. And the further we go with this thing, the more difficult it's going to be to back off. The other thing is, you have, you have entered so many variables into this thing, trip generations and pervious versus impervious, and all of that business that you of us are really acquainted with, that you've just opened yourself up to more complaints and questions about, from anyone whose assessment is going to be increased. And I think you've made it a lot more complex than it needs to be. And I think we ought to take a timeout, work the old way into the upcoming budget, and then make an attempt to really hear from our residents before we move forward on anything of this styscope and complexity. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Banks, comments, questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. First, I just want to thank Russ. I mean, you put a lot of hours and a lot of thought went into, you know, putting this together. And I do think you were operating on, on, I think, the board's requirements of you. I think, in doing so, I think the board is at fault for not putting some measures in place for us to provide Russ with more guidance and the opportunity to vet this out further throughout the process. And what I mean by that is, there's a lot of different ways you can make a dress. You can, you know, a lot of types of materials, different patterns, different ways to sew it together. At the end of the day, if it doesn't fit, then the value of the dress isn't there. And I feel like that's where we're at right now with this assessment methodology. And I had every intention of, and do have every intention of pushing the assessment methodology forward. I think it's the right thing to do. I think what we have today is just not justifiable. I think very few of us would be able to even, be able to articulate to any resident how we come up with that, with the methodology today. That makes sense. So I think having, having a new methodology that is based on, you know, something that is, is, you know, substantial, that's statistically relevant, is important. I think where the problem is, and we do this a lot, we hire an expert to come in and create something, but we don't always have the expertise to dive deep into whatever that expert is supposed to be putting together in order to vet it out, and from a resident's perspective, really get there, kind of voice the customer as we go through the process. What I would recommend is, is looking at the assessment methodology. And based on what Jim said, I think there's some truth to it, and I've heard it in a couple, from a couple different individuals, is, I think, Russ, what you put together is exactly what we told you, or at least how you assumed it. I do think it's probably maybe a little too deep. I would like to use this as a version 1.0 or a version 0.5 and drill it up a notch, so it's maybe not quite so sophisticated in the methodology itself. I think one thing that we should do is create an oversight committee or a steering committee, probably no more than three people, you know, someone like Jim, who has expertise that can represent the, not only the resident's point of view, but also, you know, be a subject matter liaison that can work with Russ and the board to say, "Hey, here's some things that I, that we recommend, we adjust the methodology that would make sense to residents, drilling things up." And I think if we did that, we would get to a product that is consumable for residents, but also beneficial for the district. We've done this in the past, and I think we don't do it enough. We had the WAC committee, we've had, we have the PONZ group now, we used to have the traffic committee, and these people put in some really great work and brought back recommendations that helped us get to a solution at the end. So I'm not, matter of fact, I'm not opposed, I'm absolutely for an updated assessment methodology, something that is, is based on fact that we can justify, that uses formulas that we can, you know, justify and replicate. My only issue is, I think what we have today might be a little bit more than what's needed. I think we need to drill it up one more level, so it's easier to consume and maybe, you know, not quite of a difference between, you know, multifamily versus single family, you know, some of the pervious and impervious. I think we need to just drill it up, generalize a little bit more, but still make sure at the end of the day that we're reaching our goal, which is a new methodology based on some, a substantial methodology that we can back by fact that gives the district what it needs, but also is what I consider fair and equitable and consumable by the residents. So that's, that's all the comments that I have.
Comments, questions, Supervisor Tinkle?
Hey, Russ, thanks for the presentation. A couple of things. First, I want to get off the table real quick. Like, do you have some stock interest in Gateway Golf and Country Club?
Me?
Yeah.
No.
Anybody at Gateway Golf and Country Club twist your arm to come up with these numbers?
No.
Okay, glad we got that out of the way. Is this your first rodeo at preparing a assessment methodology?
No, sir.
How many years you been doing this, Russ?
15.
So in 15 years, I'm assuming you've done quite a few of these, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is the Gateway methodology typical of a methodology for a community of the size and type the Gateway is?
Yes, it is. I've done, I've done a couple of very large communities like that, West Lakeland and the East Coast in particular, done basically the same way, but we adjust it every year.
Thank you. What's the difference between what we're doing here in the way Thank you. What's the difference between what we're doing here in the way and assessment methodology versus, as you were heard, or maybe didn't hear at all, a position taken of a tax knowledge? What's the difference between what you're doing here and a tax assessment would be done?
Well, first of all, a tax is not an assessment. They are they are separate. A tax, first of all, a tax is what is usually done on on the property, when you on the property value, and then, you know, they apply the mileage to that. And then it's it's done across the property values. And and it has to go to a referendum. An assessment is is not a referendum. It's because there are differences in in the taxes, in the assessments.
Thank you. Have you ever done an assessment methodology in Florida where we have, throughout Florida, seasonal versus full time, where a assessment methodology has taken into consideration seasonal versus full time people?
I have not done that, no.
Have you ever heard of one?
I have not heard of one either.
Have you ever heard of one that takes in consideration widows and senior citizens versus other people?
Not in assessment methodology, no.
Thank you. Is the existing system that we have, which is stormwater based, fair and equitable in your opinion?
Well, in my opinion, I think it really needed to be updated because it's it's not the appropriate measurement for your roadways or for administration. It truly was done for water management because when it was initially applied, it made sense. Now you have different, you have different categories that really need to be measured differently. And what you're trying to determine is the benefit you're you're receiving from the capital improvement program and the maintenance of those capital improvements. Therefore, you know, if you're going to measure roadway, you had to measure it by, here's another good example. If you're submitting into a county, for instance, to get some entitlements on a piece of land, you're not going to measure the traffic generation going by by your water management, you're just not going to do it that way. It's just not, that's not fair and equitable.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to the both the two golf courses. Was the method that was done where those two community or those two entities were assessed based on their water and wetland acreage, was that fair and equitable?
Well, the the thing is, is they were the ownership of the land underneath, you know, and the lakes was actually on the golf courses. So they were being assessed on those on those acres. Now, now, to me, they're part of the water management system. You you don't assess the water management.
Thank you. Thank you. If this thing, if this would be delayed, this decision would be delayed, which I'm going to do everything in my power to stop it from being delayed, this board did everything it could to kick the can down the road two years ago, for the very same reasons we're making today. We kicked it down the can down the road last year for the very reasons we're trying to make today. I think we've gone down the road far enough of kicking this can. We've hired a professional consultant. We have never, on any of our professional consultants, gone out and made a statement as ridiculous that we're going to go out and have citizen input, challenge a professional consultant's opinion. What the hell did we spend $30,000 for? This is ridiculous. Have you ever had this done before, Russ?
No, Mr. Tinkle, I have not. And, you know, normally, they will, I've had CDDs come to me and say, here's the situation, and they've had, you know, here's what we need to do. But but in terms of how I go about doing it, they rely on my professional opinion to do it.
Russ, in your professional opinion, we are successful, and I am unsuccessful in stopping this from being kicked down the road. And we go to August, and we are left with the assessment methodology that we currently have. What's going to happen when we are challenged by the those that are unfairly impacted by the current assessment methodology, which we have certainly demonstrated very well of its fallacies? What are we going to do when we're we're challenged on that? Are you going to come out and say that the system that we have, current system that we have, is fair and equitable?
I would hope, what Madam Chairman, what I would suggest is if
Yes, please.
wants to challenge, I don't think that I don't think
I mean, it's my turn, Tony.
No, but I don't think it's appropriate to ask the district consultant whether or not the district will win or lose litigation, when this is not his role.
Agreed.
Be an expert opinion, Tony. You're not a board member, Tony.
I understand that. But I'm the legal advisor. I'm giving legal advice in the board.
Well, I want to have the residents challenge that legal advice.
Gentlemen, if
This is ridiculous, guys.
question, I would have I would have deferred to to legal counsel on that. Because it's not my opinion.
If asked, Russ, at a meeting, is the system that we currently have, in your professional opinion, is the system we have currently fair and equitable to all parties?
Mr. Tinkle, you asked me that before, and I said it's just one measurement that is is not appropriate for the different types of capital improvement improvements that you have, and also the the operations and maintenance of those capital improvements.
I would agree. At this point in time, my thing is, is that we have retained, we have brought in the expertise of a professional who has done this. Quite obvious, he has done it before. This isn't his first rodeo. I think we take his professional opinion and run with it. If we start getting into dividing up this community to try to make perfect, that we satisfy the widows, the singles, the seasonals, the people that don't have kids, the people who don't use the parks, the people who don't do this, the people who has two cars, the people that have eight cars, we are going to pull our hair out trying to come up with a methodology. I believe that the methodology that Russ has put is very, very equitable. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. I don't think you're going to find perfect in Gateway. But it is a heck of a lot better than the system we have right now. And I am very fearful that when we go to an August meeting, and we don't bring in a system that is fair and equitable with the documents that we have prepared and have as public, we are going to be challenged by the commercials, and we're going to be challenged by the residential, and we're going to be challenged by the golf courses.
Point of order, Miss Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Is there any time limit on this, or should I order lunch or dinner? Go get lunch.
We're, I understand, this is, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Guy, but this is this is a huge endeavor for the board to take up in the community to to have this big a change. This is a huge change. I have, I tend to agree. Excuse me?
I didn't know that.
You finished, Mr.?
Time yet?
We haven't. I just, I understand his concern, but there's not, we need to vet this.
I believe that we have vetted it for three years. I believe we've hired a professional. We've spent a lot of money.
Mr. Tinkle, I believe I have the floor. I have the floor. You finished. I have the
No, I wasn't finished, Margaret.
Bill interrupted Ed.
I'm sorry?
I think Bill interrupted Ed.
Okay. Please finish, Mr. Tinkle, so I can have my say.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I'm saying is, is that we've hired a professional who is quite knowledgeable in this field, and he has done what I believe to be a one hell of a job in a very difficult issue. I don't know how you're going to get anything that's going to be any better. I don't care how many committees and how many people you put together. This is very complicated issue that he's dealing with. Notwithstanding the fact that we giving data from 2019 to show his data, when it should have been the 2020 data, and when in reality, it's going to be based upon 2020 numbers that we have yet to determine. My thing is, is that we totally immediately proceed with going with the recommendations of our consultant. I'm done, Margaret.
Okay, thank you. I I have absolutely utmost confidence in our consultant. I don't, I'm not suggesting that it's faulty in any way, or that it wasn't, he hasn't done a professional job. I'm suggesting that it's for the community. Perception is reality, and this is being pushed quickly without the community really being able to sink their teeth in it to it and vet it and understand it. And the questions I get is, how come the residential properties are paying more, the golf course is paying less, and the commercial properties are paying less? Why is it, why am I sharing the burden on my shoulders and everybody else gets a break? And we need to be able to explain these things in more than just a two hour timeframe at a public hearing, that people can't even come to the building and listen to the public hearing. My biggest problem with this is, and it's not, none of these things are our fault. It's, we're pushed up against deadlines because of the tax, when we have to get things to the tax office. We're pushed up against deadlines because of COVID-19. We can't have face to face meetings. And I think for this big of a change, we need to be able to have an open forum, public hearing. Everybody gets to ask all the questions that they want, and they have time to digest this. And we, that's what's not available here. Not saying that our consultant didn't do a good job, but I think that we're it's this delay. We should have had it in January, and we didn't. Now we're trying to rush something through. And I think we were going to allow Jim to make some short comments. If Jim is still available, I'd give him five more minutes to make a comments.
And Madam Chairman, before we go to Jim, I just have I have one question for clarity. And I'm not sure who to point it to. But if we approved the methodology today, when would it technically go into effect and impact the residents?
Madam Chairman, may I address that?
Yes, sir.
The concept and approach would be that if the board was to approve this assessment methodology to be utilized for the preparation of and consideration of the fiscal 2020, 21 budget, then that would give the staff the tool to utilize when the budget is prepared and sent to the board, and then the board approves the budget prior to June 15th, and sets the public hearing two months later. At the public meeting where the board adopts the budget, the board will also hear any other objections to the assessment and assessment methodology, as this would be considered as a new assessment under Florida statutes. If you increase an assessment over the O and M assessment, not debt service, if you increase an O and M assessment, one penny over the prior year's assessment amount per year, you EAU, is considered a new assessment. So there'd still be the opportunity for the residents and property owners to ask the board to adjust and equalize the assessments at that hearing in August. Now, that becomes difficult because any adjustments that are made at that time would have interesting effects on the budget as the board would need to adopt it prior to and submit it to the county prior to September 15th. So the board, the the timing is such that we tried, the idea was to have this, if the board was going to decide to adopt this, have it in place when the board considers approving purposes of setting the public hearing, the budget, because that would then tell the property owners, based upon this budget, if it's approved, based upon this methodology, this is what your assessments would be. And that's the high watermark of the assessment and the budget number. One other point is, I think from a legal perspective, excuse me, based upon COVID-19, the executive orders, and the suspension of the requirement for in person fiscal forms, I think that the board is legally conducting these meetings as being accessible meetings under Florida statutes, the public meetings law, and the governor's executive orders, recognizing that there's a practical consideration, board want taken to account, and there have been some concerns expressed around the state with local governments that any issues or difficulty of accessibility remotely provide an opportunity for a challenge to proceedings down the road. But I know that's kind of lengthy, Mr. Banks, but hopefully I answered his question.
So we would have, if we accepted today, we, in theory, if I'm following you correctly, we would have up until technically August make any modifications to the methodology? Knowing that there could be some some downward impacts to the overall
No, I think the methodology would have to be in place before the board approves its budget and sets the public hearing.
Yes, but if there was, if there was a slight modification, and it would just, you know, would
Yeah, if the modification would inure to the benefit of property owners by reducing the assessment amount, that would be okay, but it could not increase it above what would be set by approval of a budget. Yeah. Russ, do you have any issue with that?
No. No.
Yeah. And then just, Russ, would you mind answering Margaret's question around if a resident asks, why is residential assessments going up while golf courses and commercials are going down?
Yes, Mr. Banks, the not all of the commercial ones are going down, some are going up. And primarily, that's being driven by the transportation side and some of the water management side. Because of, you know, the amount of of water they're putting into the water management system, and their trips are higher, just because they're commercial. And that's, that's the way, that's the way the ITE numbers come out. With regard to the golf course, we took the acreages out of the lakes because they were assessing the lakes, which I've never done before. I've never, you know, heard of assessing a lake because it's part of the water management system. Doesn't matter who owns it, it's still part of the water management system. But again, that that goes back to the original methodology. And if you were to look at the property acroser data that gets downloaded, it would say the golf course was 300 acres. Well, they're not looking at if it's water, if it's a, if it's a lake, or if it's the golf course itself. Well, we went back and measured each both golf courses and took those lakes out. Therefore, they have less of an impact on the water management system. Plus, you know, the the lands that they're, most of their lands are pervious, so it gets a 20% flow off of that land. Now, around the clubhouse and everything, which I measured all the clubhouses and parking lots and everything else, those got 100%. So basically, that's, that was the difference between the commercial and the golf course and the residential.
Madam Chairman, may I ask a question across, if I ask a question of Russ, and hopefully Stephen Blooms on the phone. Russ, my recollection was when we began this adventure, there was discussion with regards to whether or not to back out the ponds and lakes. And I think Stephen, a number of the districts, other districts you represent, some had the lakes in, some of the lakes out, as far as them being, I'll call it allocated units for purposes of assessment. And it was, no two districts are necessarily alike in that regard, I thought. That was my recollection, Russ.
Yeah, and Tony, and you know, everyone that I've had a golf course, we have taken the lakes out. So
But I'm talking, I think Stephen mentioned there were some where he had them in, if I recall correctly. I don't know if you recall that conversation.
I don't recall that conversation, although I, you know, I would like to see it. And I'd like to see how old their methodologies are.
Yeah, well, I'd like to see one named.
My recollection could be wrong, but Stephen can correct me.
And after we've talked about this, then maybe we can get Stephen on the phone. But while I ask that question, you're saying that later in the year, we could do adjustments to this methodology. But if we do adjustments to it, not everybody is going to have reduced. If we change the methodology in any way, some will go up and some will go down. Because you've got a flat, a flat methodology. I don't see how we could make any changes and have it I don't see how we could make any changes and have it affect the assessments in a downward trajectory.
Well, in essence, once again, Russ, correct me if I'm wrong, you're not, you wouldn't be changing the methodology. You'd be basically tweaking it as it applied or just as applied to particular property. Is that correct, Russ?
That's correct. And I, and I understand what Mr. Banks was saying in, in maybe taking a look at, at taking it up a notch. However, what happens then is it truly, are you really getting the benefit? You know, what you're trying to do is reduce the difference between the assessments, basically. Because they are, I mean, they are, every, every property has its own assessment based on the way that it was done. But then, I mean, there's, there's other ways that you can do that. If you want to say all 52-foot home sites have this and all 60-foot home sites have this. And there's, there's, there's a number of different ways. So, and what Mr. Pierce had mentioned is, is correct. If we make adjustments to it, it would be, well, this, just like I found in your methodology you're currently doing, I found a parcel in the Pelican Preserve golf course that wasn't being counted. And so there's a lot of, I mean, I went through a lot of detail and looking at all your parcels and what was being assessed and what wasn't being assessed. That's how we got to where we were.
Yeah, and my whole point is what I don't want to do is, and even when, you know, regarding the churches, you know, I don't want to come out and start making adjustments to the methodology. You know, the methodology should be, the methodology should be the methodology across the, across the board. And if, and if there is a methodology, then it's justifiable across the board. And you're always going to have, when you make a change like this, you're going to have winners and losers. It's unfortunate and some areas are going to go up, some areas are going to go down. But the reason why I'm in for this, why I'm in favor is because it does that. It, it at least levels the playing field from a calculations perspective and it's something that we can justify. Whether you, you have an opinion that, you know, one is going up, one's going down and maybe that's not fair or why are we going down to the degree, which I think, Russ, you articulate that. You have to do that in order to have something that is, you know, fair and equitable across all properties because of the property types. My only point was, when you do this, there might be some winners and losers that might gain above what I would consider what is an acceptable amount coming out of the gate. So I didn't know if there was maybe a way that we could set some type of threshold where if a residential was increasing, that it wouldn't increase over a certain percentage year one, over year two, just so it's more consumable to, to, to the residents. Is that a possibility, Russ?
And you know, Mr. Banks, I would have to think about that a little bit. Because, because if you're setting, you know, a limit on the going up, that means the ones that are going down are going to have to come back up in order to compensate.
There's a limit, there's a plus, a variance, plus or minus going both ways, right? So you can't, that's my point, it's just, I'm trying to minimize the impact. And if you say, look Doug, there's no way to do it. Either you pull the Band-Aid off and you get this straight, then that's the only way you can do it, then that's fine. I'm just, we're trying to throw out some, just some talking points because that's what a public hearing is for, is to vet through any final points before we, before we make a decision. And the, so if you can answer that, and then the last thing I'm going to say is, if, if there are board members that have issues with the methodology today, I think we need to specify what those issues are and what is the potential path that we're going to do to get us in a better place a year from now where we can make this decision without, you know, any, any discussion. And I don't, will we hire another consultant to continue Russ's work, fact check? My whole point around the steering committee is just to have individuals who might have some subject matter experts that could look at things a little differently than the board to provide some, some potential input on the finished product. By no means am I looking for the residents to direct us in how to proceed, which is almost what I feel is happening right now in this case. But anyway, that's enough for me.
Is Stephen Bloom available to answer the question about the lakes?
He is.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you able to hear me? Yes.
Yes.
I'm available.
Stephen.
The question came up. Go ahead, Tony, I'll let you ask the question.
Yeah, I apologize. The question came up, the discussion was with regards to, under Russ's methodology, backed off the lakes and the ponds from the calculation of acreage and the various parcels. And from the standpoint of allocating, I guess I'll call it units or making the determination of impacts. And I thought we had discussions way at the beginning of this process where there are some districts that you represent or manage where they had included the lakes and somewhere they had not included the lakes. If I'm wrong, I stand corrected, I thought there was some that you mentioned did include the lakes.
Well, yeah, I think what we've seen is the concept of gross accessible, accessible versus net. You know, and I, we have seen across different districts where it has not been consistent.
So the gross accessible wouldn't include, yeah, so the gross accessible includes the lakes and ponds on a site, the net backs them out.
Right, and, and some of that is, is the, the difference between whether or not, you know, it's unplatted or platted and how that changes and stuff. So I, I think the conversation was just was that across, you know, districts that there hasn't been a great consistency, not whether or not one is better than the other.
Okay, thank you. Stephen, this is Ed. Have you ever seen any CDD where there is a disparity between the user classes of determining wetlands and ponds being assessed for one class versus not for another?
No, no, Gateway is very unique in terms of the product mix, I think.
Thank you very much.
Russ, in your experience, you probably would agree with that, but it is. I mean, again, a lot of, most communities are pretty similar in product types.
Thank you very much. That's what people just do not understand here. I have interest in the Gateway Golf and Country Club, but I am interested in fair and equitable. They have 226 acres, of which 60 acres is wetlands and ponds. Nobody else other than Pelican Preserve has that situation. People, guys, this is not fair and equitable.
To follow, this is Russ, to follow up on what Stephen had mentioned. You're right, it's gross accessible, net accessible. And a lot of that goes to who owns the lakes, it's an ownership issue. You know, I've had, in a lot of the districts that I have, the lakes get turned over to the district in, in terms of ownership, just this reason, you know, it's, I'm surprised that, that the golf course still owns the lakes. But that's, you know, I've seen it most of the time, most of the CDDs I work with, the lakes get turned over to the CDD because they're maintained, they're part of an integrated water management system.
We can thank that to WCI and their infinite wisdom.
And we have to be careful on the use of the term turnover because it might be easements and the facilities are turned over, but they may not be deed it. There's a big difference, so the phrase turnover is not a good phrase to use.
Yeah, I, I agree, Tony, but, but here's the, the other part of that. If you're, if, if you're using, they're using the property appraiser data in order to assess under the current methodology, right? And it's showing the deed part, which means the golf course owns them. If the golf course didn't own them, they wouldn't be assessed for those.
I'm just talking about the phrase turnover, Russ. It's, it's used too loosely, okay?
Oh, yeah, no, I, I understand what you're saying, conveyed, I get it.
And I guess the last thing was, and, and Chris, if, if Jim is available, I'd give him five minutes to just, after he heard what Russ had to say, to make any additional comments. Or if anyone else has comments from the audience before we close the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, Jim is available if you guys want him to speak.
Tell him he has five minutes.
Okay, Jim, you have five minutes.
Thank you, and yes, I did hear everything that Russ said and that's exactly how I understood it was, that it was done. It didn't change anything in my opinion at all. I still have the same issues, I still have the same concerns. And if I could get the request still, that might still run a little bit more, more of the connectivity to talk with Russ with some of these things. And I did want to comment a little bit, first of all, let me go back. I mean, I do agree the ultimate method out of surprise. You know, and clearly needs to be changed, I just don't think we're there yet with this one. This one is partway there, but it's not all the way there. But since I said earlier, my first comment was it's overcooked. It's just way too complicated and which basically you ended up with other line of allocations. But I just wanted to respond to what me and Ed said. And, you know, what he said is it related to tax. It is exactly the same thing. When we do allocations for income tax, I know Russ misunderstood him to mean property tax. It has nothing to do with property tax. When you're doing an allocation for a multinational company of billions of dollars and thousands of cost centers and you're allocating everything, it's exactly the same thing. You're looking at costs and you're putting them in buckets and you're using allocation keys, you're using assumptions. It is exactly the same thing. And the fact that tax versus assessment is irrelevant for this discussion. You are doing it for purposes of charging somebody something, whether it's an assessment or a tax. And so I just want to make that clear, it's got nothing whatsoever to do with property tax. And I, I mean, I'd like these, I mean, I actually put this in an email, I think to Chris, actually a week ago. I like the steering committee idea from, I think Doug Banks was the one who suggested that. And that is not uncommon at all. I mean, when I was doing these things for a, you know, a big Fortune 100 company, I, you know, we, the, we wouldn't answer necessarily the senior or chief tax officer. We would be answering some, you know, other group within the company who was kind of questioning us and poking around and kind of picking our tires, which was done. Kept everybody, you know, alert. And so, you know, I agree with the steering committee and it's looking for people, I'll be the first volunteer. I've been doing this, like I said, for 32 years at pretty high levels. And he's on the financial side, can you move to this? So, and just to end it, I think again, you know, the fair and equitable thing, and I go back to appendix B, this is going to be the thing that's really going to have people upset. If we go beyond neighborhood assessments. So I would, I would really strongly suggest that neighborhood assessments be done. The rest of the stuff is tweaking and I don't think, the things I was discussing would take long at all. Changing the roads to being the same as the admin and parks would take no time. And doing the, the stormwater based on street symptoms in the, in the communities on a community, community basis would not take long, most of that data is already in the big model that I got. And it's just a matter of kind of moving some stuff around. So that's it, that's all I've got.
Madam Chairman?
Thank you, Jim, yes.
May I just make a couple comments, one? Number one, I, I know it may be conceived or perceived as being too technical and deep, but I think the reason for that is, is from the standpoint of trying to make sure that it's legally defensible as it's drafted and proposed, in my opinion it is. And so when any, any legislative body makes the determination to levy assessments, it doesn't have to be perfect. There are multiple alternative approaches and Russ has applied the correct test in his report. And once again, the board is the ultimate decision maker on what they want to adopt or accept. As, as far as Florida real estate taxes versus assessment, there's a significant difference. And so I think that they are not just apples and oranges, they're cauliflower and watermelon. Because ad lorm taxes are based upon the value of a structure or property. Whether you are seasonal or not, your house is worth 400,000, they apply 10 mils to it, you pay it. Florida ad lorm tax processes have homestead exemption, the widows, the seniors and all that. That doesn't, and save our homes, that does not apply to assessments, special assessments. You look at the benefit to the property and you allocate that benefit and say the benefit is greater than the cost that's being allocated to it. So I think there's significant differences between assessments and ad lorm taxes that make those comparisons really not applicable in this context, that's all.
Margaret, question for Russ.
Go ahead.
Comment on that real fast, 30 seconds.
Russ, question for you. If we would, I, I agree with, I think Doug may have said it and some others people said it, roll it to the churches. I have, I have a feeling there. If we would take and make a decision, or let me go the other way. Can we take and make a decision to go back and give a user class, i.e. the churches? And we give them an exception to the rule that we're talking about here for the assessment methodology, to take them back to the 2020 levels? Is that legal?
That, Mr. Pierce would have to answer that question.
I think, well, I think there needs to be a supportable basis to do that, not just say you want to do it because of public pressure or it cannot be arbitrary and capricious. It has to be reason discretion. So the difficulty, if Russ could say there could be a legitimate differentiation on trip generation, I think that would help in the roadway aspect. As far as water management, pervious is pervious and pervious is impervious. And that's what makes it difficult.
Thank you, Tony. Russ, can you go back and with your numbers for trip generation? For churches, under that second edition of the ITE Trip Generation Report, does it take into consideration the church has services on Sunday, one day out of seven, that creates the number that defines their trip generation?
Mr. Tinkle, I'm going to have to go back and research that because that, that would be, you know, one-seventh of that, of all those trips. That's what I need to determine. And I can't, I can't give you that answer right at the moment.
Well, my, my question was, to me, and I think Tony makes a good point, that's the only latitude that we have as a board to be able to, let's say, manipulate the system that you have given us would be to be able to find a fallacy in the assumptions.
Yeah, and Mr. Tinkle, what that, may, 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 Madam Chairman, that gets into the issue if a church has an objection. Typical, I'm not saying you're going to make them do this. They would come in and say, listen, you're, you're assigning X number of trips, Y number of days, here's our peak hour, peak day, peak season, peak month, and it only happens once every seven days. So our usage of the roads is X versus your X times.
Tony, Tony, I, I think what I'm saying is, is that I'm going to give the engineers that put together the Trip Generation Report a little bit of credibility that they understand that the churches meet on Sunday. So I take it that that number already includes that analysis.
That's probably a good assumption.
It is a good assumption, Mr. Tinkle, but I'm not going to stand behind what the Trip Generation people did until I research it.
Well, and I agree with that, but notwithstanding that issue, we don't have much other latitude to be able to selectively as a board, pick and choose what we want to do because of feelings. This is fact. You have selected an admin and a recreation based on one. You have selected a trip generation based on three analysis. Single family, multifamily and commercial. And stormwater as it falls based on the impervious calculation. I think if we get in and we start manipulating how much ever we want to to defend one user class versus another, alls we do is get out on a limb from which we can't get back.
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Yes, I wanted to ask if there was anyone else from the audience that wanted to make a comment when we close the public hearing.
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I want to say, I was very fond of what Tony just said. Tony, you completely misunderstood what I said. I have said nothing to do with Florida or any state's real estate taxes. What I'm saying is that the process of doing cost allocation for this purpose and for income tax purposes and for typical cost allocations are the same. It's got nothing to do, nothing to do with Florida real estate taxes whatsoever. But I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that, that I'm not saying anything about real estate taxes. And I agree, it's apples and oranges or cauliflower and despair, just whatever, you know, thing you said. That is not what I was saying.
Chris, I think we did have. Chris, I think we did have Mr. Davies wanted to speak, I believe.
Yes, please.
I'll unmute the mics and I'll also ask, we have Vincent Sardo online and also Felix online. So I'll also call their names after Mr. Davies has done to see if they have a comment. Davies, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I think in listening to this for the last hour, hour and a half, I think two hours, I think it's obvious that there's a lot of questions that I got answered while listening to this. And with only 20 people, not all residents listening to this, that information's not going to get out. I think there's a lot of good information that had come out and how this was determined, why it was determined, et cetera. A person going to a, going to one supervisor gets that supervisor's opinion, and only his opinion or her opinion. They need to hear what all the supervisors have to say about this. They also need to hear what, I believe his name was Jim, Pop, and also what the person who presented the, or put together that program. When you read the programs or the information put out by this, figure, if you don't have a PhD in something, it's hard to understand. It's hard to understand where they come up with some of these numbers that they're using to do this. Not that they're wrong, but there's no understanding of how they determine this stuff. The board's already looking at exceptions. And, you know, yeah, the churches are pretty much used on Sunday, but you better go by the churches during Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday because they always have things going on. But you're already looking for exceptions to get away from this. So I think, you know, put this off for 30 days, as was be put on or one of the other next two meetings on July 4th or June 4th or June 18th. It's not going to hurt the, putting this in together by August. Because I think more people, and hopefully by, who knows, in two weeks or four weeks, we would be able to have a meeting where more people can attend. A lot of people just don't like going on a computer and, and doing those kinds of things. But I think the information provided today is well worthwhile to get people to understand. There's a lot of misconceptions out there, and I think that some of those answers need to be addressed as much as possible through a public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren. Who's next, Doug?
We have Vincent Sardo online. Mr. Sardo wants to make a comment. I've unmuted all the mics. He shows himself still muted, so I would assume not.
I'm here and I received that letter along with the water bills. And to tell you the truth, I don't even understand what you're, what you're trying to do myself. And I don't think most of the residents probably don't understand. I know you're trying to do something with the, with the way you're assessing. But to me, I don't think you're going to have any, any one fair way of doing it myself. I know that the commercial property has been absorbing it on the charges. It's gotten to the point where Lee County charges less than the CDD. And I think that that's, that should really be addressed. That's basically all I have. I'd have to study this further. And like I say, I, I think maybe there should be more public meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Sardo. We appreciate your participation and your comments. And I do not see anyone else online.
Yeah, Bob Geppert's online. Can I?
Oh, sure, Mr. Geppert.
I sent you a text, but apparently you didn't, you weren't paying attention to your phone. I just have two comments because I understand this is issue. But the first has to do with, and I have worked with Russ and he's done his best to try and edumacate me. That's an uphill battle. But the difference in cost associated with the Gateway Golf Club and the Pelican Golf Club just defines reason in my head. And I'll give you the caveat, I'm not a golfer. It's no skin off my teeth. But I have a very difficult time understanding why Pelican pays four times as much. The second comment is that due to COVID right now and the impact that is, as the prior gentleman said, it couldn't come at a worse time to be ramping up charges to commercial areas. So that being said, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Geppert. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? I'd like to send in a chat request. Don't see anyone outside of the group that's been participating so far. And all the mics are unmuted. Do a second call for comments?
So Tony, it's time, is it appropriate to close the public hearing or one more round of comments from supervisors?
Well, or the board could decide to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain to address some of the issues that were raised today. That's also an option. So that you would not close it today, but continue it to a date and time certain.
Chris, with that, go ahead, Chris.
The only option I've come up with so far is chairs out on the soccer field for social distancing. And we have a PA system out there, but it would work fine unless it starts raining. And this time of year, that's iffy.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Doug.
I think we ought to have a motion and a second, if possible, to either adopt this in our assessment methodology or not. So that the folks that do the work around here, i.e. the district manager and the account, et cetera, have the time to get things going for the budget that we're going to expect to be adopted shortly. And although you know that I am opposed, I would, I would offer the motion, if you wish, just to get a vote on it. Get this thing, get this thing going. It's, that's the only thing. I think I agree with Mr. Tinkle on, we've kicked this down the road. This is his baby and he doesn't want to lose it. I understand that. But I think we're putting ourselves in a terrible position to just do nothing and do nothing and do nothing. We ought to make a decision to either not, you know, to not adopt it at this time at least, or to adopt it and give our, give our staff a reasonable amount of time to work.
I'm sorry, Catherine, go ahead.
I don't think we can make a motion where we're at. I think we have to come out of the public hearing before we can make a motion.
Madam Chairman, that's correct. If the board's not inclined to continue the public hearing, then if the board, the consensus of the board wishes to take some action today, then a motion to close the public hearing would be in order.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Doug can comment?
Who made the motion?
I did.
Ed? Okay. And Bill, you?
Guy made the second. What was the motion?
Before we
Close the public hearing.
Before we make that vote, let's
Yeah, let me, let me just pose, there's three options. One, we just, we close the public hearing and then we make some kind of decision. Two, we leave the public hearing open and allow us to continue this conversation at a later date. And at that point, we determine whether we're going to proceed or not proceed. My only point is, this should be a top priority for us to come up with a methodology that we can support that's not based on the existing environment, which is not, I think, supportable. So I think we, because of the importance, I think we should do whatever we can to determine what we need to do in order to get this to a point that it can pass. Or we can't land on that and we're going to have, we're not going to get the votes and we're going to have to push it at a later time. But I think it's important enough that we should do everything in our power to identify where there are issues. Can we resolve them? And in the interim, also, continue to communicate out to, to the residents so they understand the purpose and the practicality of this. So just before we close the public hearing, I just want to give, pose those options that we think about what is, what is it we're trying to do here? I think we need to do everything in our power to resolve any issues so we can move this forward before we just make a decision to do it or not do it right now. Because I think there's still time.
Margaret, question based on what Doug said.
Go ahead.
Doug, I totally agree with you. The only problem, and I tried to cast a line out in the sea to see what I could catch while ago with a question. And that was on the opportunity to, let's say, give the churches, which I really believe in, to give them an opportunity for a consideration. What I heard back from both Russ and Tony was that unless and until we can come up with a justification for a reduction, per the math, per the methodology that we're using, we don't have the right to pick and choose who we're going to benefit and who we're not. And I just didn't get a warm and fuzzy feeling that anything that we were going to do was going to be able to give the churches that, that benefit. So I, I just don't see that we have much of an option. The system that Doug has given, or that Russ has given us appears to be just basically for all practical purposes. It is what it is. I don't think we have a choice.
And I don't think the stopgap is the church. I think that's a good conversation. And I think it's a good conversation to have because it might be the right thing to do in some environments to give some, some leeway to nonprofits or things of that nature. I wouldn't agree with it in this situation, but I don't think that's a stopgap. I think what I'm hearing is the discrepancy between the golf courses is one area. Two, it's residential knowledge of the impact, how it was calculated, and why, why some would go up and some would go down. So that's education and communication. Other than that, I haven't really heard any other substantiating reasons why we wouldn't move forward with this. I don't think the churches are, or churches or any particular entity augmenting the existing methodology is the stopgap here.
Well, I was, I was willing to give the, up until I heard from both Tony and Russ, I was willing, willing to make a motion to make a change, to put an asterisk on the calculation of the assessment from the churches. But from what I understand, that I would be doing something that is, is not fair and equitable to the other user classes. As far as the, the golf courses, I think Russ has done one hell of a job with the math on those. The simple deal is, the reason why they are different is Gateway's got 18 holes, Pelican Reserve has 27. Their assessment is going to be 50% higher. Does everybody understand that there is a differentiation between those two? I don't think everybody understands that. Read all of our documents, read them closely. I think Russ has done one hell of a job in putting this thing together with a very difficult assignment.
Madam Chairman, if I may, Mr. Tinkle, for clarification, I think what Russ and I were saying was that as to the trip generation by a church, I don't think, I think Russ said he really couldn't answer that right now. He'd have to go look at it. If there is a possibility of having the roadway portion different by virtue of the nature of that use, that's what the IT manual is for.
Tony, Tony, the numbers that we're talking about here of reducing, and Russ, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we would get into the methodology that's in the IT Trip Generation second edition
I'm sorry, everybody has gotten
If, if we would go into that and it shows that we would be able to change or modify the church's numbers, the differentiation on the other user classes is
I've reached a point where everybody's breaking up. I'm not hearing people.
I think that's
Are you hearing me?
Call the question.
I agree.
Call the question.
Well, can I, one last comment. Everybody else went down the road. We have a choice.
I'm sorry, this, this is Russ. So one thing I wanted to, to elaborate a little bit more on, that what Mr. Tinkle had said, where one golf course will be 50% higher is not exactly, that's the easy math. But it's not. There's a lot of difference to that in the budget is different over there for water management versus Gateway. There are less number of units that it's spread over, so therefore it's going to have a larger percentage of it versus what's over at Gateway. So there are a lot of different variables that make up that difference. It's not just that because they're nine holes bigger, therefore they should be 50% more. It's, it's, there's a lot of different variables to that.
It's all of
Later, I think it's time that we vote on closing the public hearing.
Right.
I agree, Bill.
And the choice is, the choice that was really actually in front of us, and the motion is to close the public hearing, was to postpone the public hearing. So just wanted to say that we did have the, we do have the opportunity to postpone the public hearing. But when we close it today, it's closed. We won't be able to bring
Close in second.
Yep. Okay, call the vote, Chris.
Motion in the second. We'll call the vote. Supervisor Flaherty?
No.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
No.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
No.
We have three noes and two yeses. The motion to close the public hearing is failed. Any discussion or another motion?
I would, what, I know you said jokingly that the soccer field is available, but have you reached out to anyone else for a June 5 venue for a public hearing? Different people have suggested, like the school cafeterias. I don't, have you reached out to any of, anybody besides the churches for us to have a public hearing?
No, I haven't. And they just, they hadn't opened up their services yet, but that was last week, but I couldn't approach the school board.
I mean, you can look at, Chris, I mean, right to the elementary school, they've got a covered area in the back.
Right.
That is an open area that we could bring a P A in if we needed to. And they might even actually have a P A hooked up back there. They use it for outdoor activities across the school. So I think it'd be plenty big for us. Covered, open area at the elementary school.
Sure, I'd be glad to.
With that, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the public hearing on this assessment methodology to June 5 with the hopes that we can find a venue large enough that people can attend.
I'll second that.
Would you restate the motion, please? I missed part of it.
I said, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the public hearing on the assessment methodology, adoption of the assessment methodology until June 5 with the hopes that we can find a venue large enough that people can attend.
Madam Chair, if I may, June 5th or Friday?
It's June 4.
Oh, I'm sorry, June 4. I apologize. Yes.
Yeah, I would suggest it be to continue the public hearing to June 4 at a place and time to be determined. And then that would require a new add in the paper to make sure, because when you continue public hearing, typically you want to do it to a date, time, and place certain. typically you want to do it to a date, time and place certain.
So I'd like to continue the public hearing to June 4th.
At 3:00 P. M.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to continue the public hearing to June 4th at a time and place for 3:00 P. M.
Tony, I just ask you, it doesn't actually have to be on the 4th, does it?
Well, the reason for the 4th was looking at the budget schedule, the budget work schedule in order to meet the requirement to approve a proposed budget by June 15th. We were hoping to have it in place before the board approves its budget. So that's why, now arguably it could be June 11th or any other date after that, June 15th. But that, we're trying to avoid the crunch time, trying to minimize the crunch time. So Stephen and Chris don't pull all their hair out.
And we have to have a, we have to have a notification in the paper seven days in advance, is that correct?
If, well, because we don't know where the place would be, yes.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would go along with that with one consideration, that that is available for a non-COVID-19 meeting where people can be there in person. If that cannot happen, I'm totally opposed to it.
I understand. That's, that's the hope. It needs to be where people can attend.
The understanding is, is that if it does not, if it does not turn into an open meeting where people can be there, then this whole thing is dropped.
Well, no, I think we continue with it, but if it's another forum like we have today.
What are we going to accomplish, Doug?
What, I mean, the argument is not everyone was, there might have been some technology issues. For me, it's not so much about having an opportunity for residents to attend the meeting. I think it's giving them another, you know, two weeks to, in order to get with Chris or to send their questions over so we can get those answered. You don't have to be in the meeting in order to get a question answered or to build confidence in what we're trying to do here. For me, the biggest thing is, if there's any board member that opposes the assessment methodology today, other than just adamantly opposing it and cannot articulate the reasons why, then board members need to get with Chris or Russ and, and walk through their issues with the, with the desire to reconcile or to propose adjustments to the existing methodology in order for it to be accepted. That's what a governing body does.
I totally agree.
We need to work together for the whole purpose to adopt this methodology.
I totally agree.
Now, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Can we do it on a different day from our normal meeting and then put it at a different time?
Yes, yes.
Could that be better?
Why?
Making it later in the day.
Oh, well, on the 4th, we could have our regular board meeting. Oh, no, we can't because we need to adopt the budget, right, Tony?
Well, again, you, you could still then, on the 4th, approve the methodology and that would give time to prepare all the budget, the documents to have the budget approval hearing on, say, June 11th or 12th before the 15th. Have a special meeting, you can have a special meeting solely.
We can have a special meeting.
Yes.
So you can have a special meeting for adoption of the budget.
For, for approval of the budget.
And that would be the 11th. We could have the, we could have the regular meeting at 3 o'clock and then have the public hearing at, I think normally we do it like 5.
Which day, Margaret? Which day, Margaret?
On the 4th.
I can go along with that.
And, and, and if the board wishes to, the board could do a blend. If people have a setup where, you know, whether it's technology or possible to have people attend in person if they want to appear. But that gets a little difficult. Some, some places are going to hybrid.
So the regular meeting is at 3:00 and then the public hearing would be at 5:00, hopefully at the elementary school. Hopefully. But we don't know that for.
What, what?
And we'll have another meeting on the 11th for the budget? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
The meeting for the budget would be the 11th.
Okay, thank you.
Why did you say the elementary school, Margaret? Why not the soccer field?
Because there's a covered area over, Doug said there was a covered area over at the elementary school. Correct, Doug?
If it rains, it wouldn't be impacted, it wouldn't stop the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, just as an option.
Can we meet social distancing over there?
Yeah, I, there's plenty, I think there's plenty around. I doubt we have more than some people show up, but I, I don't know if anyone wants to take bets on that.
Get more than 10 people, I'm buying the popcorn.
All right, over, under 15 then?
We need to, do we need to? Tony, do I need to include the budget meeting on the 11th in this motion? Or should I have two separate motions?
I would suggest two separate motions.
Okay. So the motion on the table is to have the regular meeting on June 4th at 3 o'clock and the public hearing at 5:00 at a, at a site to be determined.
So it would be continue this hearing on the assessment methodology to June 4th at 5:00 P. M. At a place to be determined, preferably the elementary school.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Kathy was the original second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Chris, please call the vote.
He's not there.
We're back. Tony, I'm going to get it's coming back. Tony, you there?
Yes. Margaret, did you say 5:00 P. M. on the 4th?
Yes.
Where did he go?
Tony, it was 5:00 P. M. on the 4th.
Yes. Madam Chair, want me to take the roll?
Again, have a regular meeting at 3:00 and a budget hearing at 5:00.
Is he back?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. We have a motion to post, continue the public hearing to June 4th at 5:00 P. M. At a place to be determined. And the regular board meeting will be at 3:00.
Call the roll.
Okay.
Chris, call the vote, please.
Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy? Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Motion to continue the hearing to June 4th at 5:00 P. M. and end this vote.
Madam Chair, there's a, somebody's phone is ringing.
Somebody's phone's ringing.
Who's phone?
It sounds like it's still drum band, okay. Madam Chair, I think the next motion would be the one you're suggesting is to have a special meeting on June 11th at, on 2020 at 3:00 P. M. For consideration of approval of the budget.
I make a motion to have a special meeting on June 11th at 3:00 o'clock for approval of the budget.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to continue the budget meeting to June 11th, 3:00 P. M. I'll call the vote. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkle?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion that passed to continue the whole budget hearing on June 11th at 3:00 P. M.
And with that, I believe the public hearing portion of the meeting is over and we can move into regular meeting. To get everything back on because it's not on there yet.
Madam Chair, be appropriate to take a five-minute recess. Everybody stay here, but everybody mute while they switch over.
I think that's fine. I agree.
Seven-tinning stretch, thank you.
Davis tried to call.
Hey, Ed, you're not on mute.
Thanks, Doug.
I think the first thing we have coming up is Tony and then that opposition letter.
Roundabout letter?
Yeah. Tony's going to, indeed, he's going to discuss, but I don't think they want to look at that.
Pull that up.
Yes, it's a roundabout letter. We can stay on the agenda till he finishes. Yeah, well, we're going to see how far they get. And so, maybe next. My budget, I've cut everything up and I'll chance to hack it up then on the 4th. That's the cost, surge is after you.
Okay, are we all up and running again?
Yes, we're up and running. You might not have missed us, but our whole system went black for about four minutes.
Oh, gosh.
You're hanging that discussion, we had to reboot, come back on, everything went down. I think we got a little surge in the building or something happened. But yeah, we're back on, back on the.
Somebody probably went out there and switched. Okay, is everybody back and we can go back to try and get through the rest of this meeting?
Sure, and if, if you like what we're at, is District Attorney time. Do you have a special warrant to be for the Commerce Lake Drive?
Just a discussion, it's an update. The parties representing the closing agent for the, for Lee County.
Tony, Tony, I'm sorry, before we do that, just for protocol, should we ask if there's any residents on the line that have any comments on agenda or non-agenda item?
Oh, very good, thank you. Sorry about that.
Aren't there any residents online? I don't have any chats right now. We're kind of, basically, we have the board. Flavia's on. Flavia, would you like to make some comments?
I do, I actually have comments on non-agenda items.
You have five minutes.
Okay, so I actually kind of wanted some updates, even though I am too much out there every day on the restoration on Lake 83. I had sent some questions to Jimmy, which he had forwarded to Brian and, and Chris in regards to the project. And, and I guess I need some guidance in, in regards to why are we seeing washouts already on the pond? The planning of that control structure. I think we have side notes that weren't addressed and, and that includes a possible installation of additional sod, some irrigation issues. And I don't know if it'll be easier for Chris to kind of summarize the four-page PDF file that I sent to him. But I, I'm not sure if staff needs direction from the board on approving some of this items that were not either included on the, the original scope or they were and they're just missing. At this point, I just, just need to know which direction is, is this going to go? And, and I guess that question is towards Chris. And I guess that question is towards Chris really, and if he can answer any of them.
What you're talking about is what's going to happen around the structure, sod or rock? Okay, so there'll be a rock placed around the structure. And that's already been done. It was actually from the original bid the contractor gave in terms of an extra $1,500 to put some stone around there on top of the $26,000 because it wasn't specified at the time.
Well, in regards to the control structure, I was actually talking about the coverts and those pipes that seem to now be too short around the, around the pond. And in particular, the one behind 13276 where you can actually see the stones falling directly into the opening of that pipe. I mean, it boggles my mind that we approve something, you know, a restoration, you know, over half a million dollars and this was, you know, not addressed. I, I give it three months to that pipe to be completely clogged with, with rocks. And we already saw it's probably the opening, I don't know, 20% clogged with sand and it was just clean a week ago.
Right, you want Chris to talk about the minor denn sections of the song rag pipes in the lake?
The only thing I know. There, there you go. We can look at possibly like say, it's a minor denn where it comes into the lake and the lake's down probably low since then, probably 10 to 15 years, so those are showing. You can put something over the pipes and nothing goes into it. We have to date back on that bank that was just now, and all you are on to do that. As far as keeping the rocks out, once the water level goes up and down, I don't see the rocks moving unless somebody kicks them away right now, but you got five that go into the lake. One or two is probably the worst. I can go out and get with tech to tech and see what his solutions may be.
Chris, question.
Sure.
Was there a punch list of items following the construction down there that identified these items that Flavia's talking about that were deficiencies that were not corrected?
They're working on that punch list right now and they, they got going and did a final walkthrough. The contractor had already demoted. He was saying, I'm gonna do it under warranty issues. So I know they had a walkthrough with Tyler and there was a long punch list. I think most of the items have been addressed, but Flavia still has some concerns that.
But my, my experience has always been that once you have a punch list and less than until the punch list is done, the warranty clock doesn't start ticking. You can't immediately start saying and deferring everything to a warranty when it's punch list items. If we have a list of punch list items that for which she's concerned about, they can't stall those off and defer those as warranty, in my opinion.
And that was the comment I made to the contractor when they, their final pay request was signed off. And I told them I was holding that they should have put in their request and left the 10% of retainage. But I said, those aren't warranty items. Just because you demoted off the site doesn't mean they're, you know, you do it as warranty. But they, they've been addressing a lot of the items, I believe, this week.
Well, I would agree with the, use the retainage to, the rule of thumb is 200% of the value to correct the problem is retained until and unless they do all the punch list items. Then, when that's still done, they can go into the warranty, but until then, that money is withheld at 200% level. That gets to fix the punch list items very quickly when you're holding it at 200%.
And then another item that she was concerned about in the residence war was when they put the sod down the lake, it extends further than the residence sprinkler systems do. So that once the rains stop, they're concerned that all that sod's gonna die. So there is no adequate sprinkler coverage for the new sod they put down there below the residence existing sprinkler systems. And they're actually saying they need to extend those systems further down the lake bank to get coverage on them. And they're worried that after the contractor sells this 30 days of water and the sod after that, that that area of the sod will die. And they're asking about extending the residence sprinkler systems further down the bank for coverage.
If you recall, this has been discussed numerous times on other ponds. And that is, is that the residence, each individual residence's sprinkler system in all of Gateway, I don't care which community it is, it goes down to the control elevation. At the control elevation, it waters everything upstream above that, not below, but above that. So if, if, if the irrigation system of the, of the individual property owners was done correctly, it was installed at the control elevation and along the control elevation such that the issue of grass dying is not an issue.
Doug Flavia, if you'd like, we could go through that with Brian and then come back to the board with an update on June 4th and we would know by then that all your issues are addressed.
Chris, my only concern is, I mean, Tyler sent an email, I think it was two weeks ago, that he's waiting for direction to plant, I mean, waiting for direction on that four feet of sod. He, he, he made it seem like it was, you know, it was a priority that he did not want that fabric exposed to the elements. But I, I don't see, I don't, I don't think putting the sod down without having adequate irrigation in the area, it's, it's, it's a smart solution because then we're gonna have to go back and fix it. And I don't even think, I don't even think extending is what we want right now. I just, I just think replacing most of the heads with a bigger range to get the additional four feet that before was always underwater and now that we have a, you know, the control level, it's down. So we just have sod that was never there before.
Same issue, we had the same issue over at Gateway three years ago, four years ago, when we started this whole process. The contractor is responsible for providing water irrigation for any of that sod that is below the control elevation. Especially it's in these dry times right now when it's as dry as, it, it's, it, there's no, there's no water. So it's the contractor's responsibility, or it should be the contractor's responsibility, to water from the pond up to the control elevation. And then the control elevation on up to the yard of each and every property owner is the responsibility of the property owners and they should have their heads adjusted such that they would water that. So you're talking about a two or three foot strip that the contractor's responsible for watering. And I agree with you, Flavia. If they don't come in and water, that grass is gonna die.
And he had, they replaced all the sod yesterday, they, you know, four pallets and, and it's not getting water. So I'm literally having my, with water holes and, and water that to try to save some of that water, which I don't think is fair.
Flavia, are you saying the contractor's not out there watering that grass every day? Flavia, come in.
Chris, I didn't hear what you said.
I was just asking her, the contractor is supposed to water that new sod for 30 days. And that's, I was asking her. Yeah, we can't hear you, Flavia. You're breaking up.
I think the issue is somebody needs to go out and take a look at this because anything below the control elevation is the responsibility of the contractor.
Hey, am I on mute? Can you guys hear me?
That Tyler?
They can hear you.
You're breaking up real bad. You're coming in and out.
Hey, guys, this is Tyler from Tech Tech. I don't mean to interrupt, but maybe I can verify some of this. Flavia's having some issues with their connection there. The, the issue is that there's, the sprinklers on the residential lots don't reach the sod that was put down. So the contractor has watered the sod six days a week for the last 30 days. And all the stuff that didn't make it, they went out this week and replaced. The issue is, after the contractor leaves, none of those sprinklers, if not none, but some of those lots won't have coverage on that sod. So it's not a, not a during construction issue, it's a moving forward in perpetuity. Obviously, the contractor won't be there past the 30 days. So moving forward, those sprinklers won't water that grass.
What are the specifications called for, Tyler, on the extent to which the contractors provide the water? How many days?
30 days.
30 days. So that means that after 30 days, that two or three foot zone or strip, which is not covered by the individual, individual, individual property owner's irrigation system, which it should not be, is gonna be in no man's land, that very possibly it'll dry up and go to dust.
That's absolutely correct. And I think 30 days ends Wednesday. I'm pretty sure.
Okay. All right. The only thing I can tell is before Wednesday, dump a lot of water on it.
I mean.
Well, it's 30 days. Tyler, the new stuff they put down is, still has, would have 30 days on that, right? The four pallets? No. The specification is 30 days from time of placement or substantial completion, whichever comes first.
Okay, well, you gotta have a deadline and that, that's real clear. You can only do what the specifications say. Just make sure that they put down one hell of a lot of water before the 30 days is up.
Yeah, I mean, what the HOA was looking for was they, they were saying, look, the sprinklers that were there might have reached, you know, the line of sod that used to be. What happened was that control elevation got lowered. Now there's four extra feet horizontally of sod that in some places doesn't get touched. They were looking for someone to make improvement to those sprinklers so they would grab that sod and that last four foot of sod wouldn't die.
That, that opens up a real can of worms because we're now talking about telling everybody that's along that lake on Lake 83 that you now have four more feet, four to one slope, one foot drop, four more feet to irrigate. I don't think I want to go out and tell all the residents of Magnolia Lake that they need to lower their irrigation system by four lineal feet.
And then about 90% of cases that I went out there and walked with them and saw, it's really as simple as just changing out to a different sprinkler head. And they're like 20 bucks a piece.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
And I would agree with Tyler. And I actually have two bids for, for, for having all the homes have adjusted, you know, new heads that would cover everything. There's two homes that actually need heads. And the HOA just went in and gave our contractor to go ahead to install that. But if, if the district is willing, I mean, one of this bid is under $7,500 to take, to take care of all 50, 51 homes. And, and, you know, we're still gonna end it up perpetuity picking up the water bill for that, which we're fine. So we figured, you know, perpetuity will get the water that, for the irrigation. But if the CDD would go ahead and, you know, adjust all those heads and install new ones, I mean, I, I think that's a fair request.
Hey, I think if they want to give us $5,000, Tyler and I'll go out there and, and do that ourselves. Because most likely, we're probably just gonna change the nozzle out on the existing sprayhead so it exprays further. So if they want to give us $5,000, we'll probably be willing to do that.
I'll do it for four.
It'd be fine.
We're just saying, this is nothing new. This is the way they've always been. This is the homeowner's responsibility to add on if they want to irrigate what wasn't previously irrigated. This is, program's always been this way. It's not the responsibility of Gateway to do that. And I think in most cases, it's a very simple solution.
Well, why should it be the responsibility of my residents when that area, it was, it was underwater? And now, we're the only getting, we're the only pond in Gateway that had the control level, the control structure lower as far as I'm concerned. So I get it. This is something new. So I'm, I'm fine having my residents go ahead and adjust it to water the grass that's there now. But the additional four feet of water that we're gonna have to put in there, I, I can't make a sprinkler go, you know, 50 feet out. It's just not gonna happen.
Flavia, is there any reason why they can't take the sprinkler head? And I know where you're going with this, but is there any reason they can't take the sprinkler head and just change the angle such that it rotates further around and instead of going 180 degrees, it may go, may go 230 degrees to be able to compensate for the additional sod caused by the four feet?
The answer is, I don't know. What I can tell you is, you know, our irrigation guys say, listen, $20 a head and each home has three heads. And, and, and that's, you know, me giving you guys a substantial discount. And, and, and that's all I can do. So I don't know, maybe Freddie can go over there and look at it. But something needs to be done. I mean, I don't want to waste money and that four feet of sod. It's all gonna die.
Flavia, does each property owner do their own irrigation or have a community-wide service?
Uh, the only thing that is excluded is the irrigation. Each homeowner does their own irrigation.
Okay. The only answer I see is that each, in my opinion, if it were me, I would just simply go out and change the spread on my irrigation head, header from 180 degrees to like 230 degrees to where it gets coverage on the additional four feet at each one of those locations.
I hate to cut you off, Flavia, but maybe we can come up with a solution. Since this is not really an agenda item, it's a non-agenda item. I realize it's extremely important to you, but I'd like to move on with the meeting. I'm sorry.
Any issues back on June 4th? And luckily, we're getting rain now, so the sod's not gonna die. But once the rain stops, I think that's what she's got concerned. And there may be some other issues they have, but we'll bring them back on the 4th.
And I understand that. And, and, and I, I would agree that I would have those concerns if they were behind my house too. So maybe we can come up with a solution. And with that, Tony, now I will turn to you.
Uh, the, the issue with regard, the item with regards to the special warranty fee, that was just an update. We're still working with John Fadima, the county attorney's office, so we can wrap this up. And I'll have a resolution at the next board meeting also to remove Commerce Lakes Drive from the towing zone area. If you recall, due to the parking along the roadways the past, the district had adopted and designated this as a towaway zone. And so we're getting closer to finalizing that transaction. With regards to the letter in opposition to the roundabout resolution, I think that Mr. Senior or Mr. Tinko may want to bring, address that issue. I think there's a board seeing the latest iteration of the, the letter and the resolution.
I have some questions about it.
And, and just for background, I've had the opportunity to review and make comments and Mr. Senior made further changes and then a final version and then adopt, draft the resolution. So Madam Chair, any board members, Mr. Schumaker may want to go down the list as per the protocol.
Yeah, the, the draft letter in front of the board while we're in the board is just the board's concurrence to authorize the chair to sign the letter. And it lists a number of concerns about roundabout versus asking for a traffic light. And we've got the pedestrians and cyclists. Next, the traffic considerations, including the 221 units and all the traffic that would come out to the north, the utility relocation, the fire station. They've asked to vote against it and also just the geometry. And they talk about the impacts of that new apartment development.
Pass first, comment, Chris?
There's also letters that are, would be attached to this from several of the property owners.
And, and Madam Chairman, the only comment I would have before Mrs. Flaherty, if I may, is that you referenced in the letter, it says, "Letter authored by Rod Senior and Ed Tinkell." I assume that would come off of it, uh, and everything else could remain. It's at the bottom of the last page. And, and Chris, I think Mrs. Flaherty had a comment, or go down the list from Mrs. Flaherty to the board.
Yes. All right. Is somebody gonna edit it, this, um, letter? First of all, thank you, Mr. Tinkell and Mr. Senior for writing it. Um, because, um, in the beginning of one of the paragraphs, way in the beginning, 20% is in numerals and it should be in words. Letter should not be, a sentence should not begin with numbers. There are a few things in it. Also, um, the aesthetics, there, you're talking about, I really think we need to stick to facts, not put, um, what could be done, because that's not gonna, that's not, um, a choice that we are talking about right now. We're just kind of talking about the, um, traffic light. So I don't think that should be put in the, the letter. I think there's a couple of grammar mistakes. I'm sorry, that's teaching me. That was my comments. Because I figure it should be facts and not opinions, and that aesthetic has to do with the median as an opinion, because we've never discussed that at all at the board level. Thank you.
Mr. Guy?
Guy? Thank you. I think technically, it is a wonderful letter, and I support it wholeheartedly. Although I think it's a little long to send to a bunch of politicians, they'll just hand it off to their technicians, technicians who have already made a determination that we're gonna have a roundabout there. Nonetheless, it's a beautiful job, and the writers, authors should be commended. It also seems to me to be extraordinarily long if we're gonna send something to the news press. But with those two comments, I am, I'm very impressed with the job. Thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Uh, no comment. I'm in support of the letter, I think, and you guys did a good job.
Mr. Tinkell?
Yeah, thanks, Bill, for your comments. I think Rod, Rod did one hell of a job in massaging what I put together in the way of engineering documentation. Granted, it is long, but I think it hits all the points that the residents and commercial establishments in Gateway want to try to impress upon the county that they did not consider in their analysis of this, this whole thing. Uh, it, it, it's amazing, this issue of cost effectiveness of a roundabout versus, uh, uh, traffic signalization. Two things. One, they didn't even take into consideration the fact that we were gonna spend, or they were going to force us to spend a million dollars of utility relocation and upgrading to do that. That's not in their analysis. And then the second thing is, everything that they have done, and this is what's really bothered me since day one, I am not a traffic engineer, but I am an engineer. The issue is, is that there is a hell of a difference between a single lane roundabout and a dual lane roundabout. They ignore the fact that two states, Indiana and Arizona, one of which I designed some of them, uh, there are a lot more accidents on a dual lane roundabout than there are on a single lane roundabout. And that intersection of Gateway and Griffin Drive is a dual lane roundabout. So I think Rod's done a hell of a job putting this together. Is it wordy? Yeah, it's a little wordy, but it covers all the issues. Uh, I'm all for getting this to it. Several res, or several, uh, residents and people from the, uh, businesses from the Gateway establishment that are, uh, impacted by this, i.e. the charter school, Denny Grimes, who lives right on the corner, and the 7-11, that have, uh, added letters of encouragement to the commissioners to reconsider going from a, uh, roundabout to traffic, uh, signalization. Thank you.
Yeah, I supported it. I think it is, uh, it is a, a long letter, but I think it touches upon a lot of, of information that I agree they need to consider. I think I'm in support of sending this letter.
Madam, Madam Chairman, what I would suggest is that if the board approves this letter being sent, that, uh, Mrs. Flaherty provides, I'll call it the editorial nits, grammatical and typos, as you referenced, uh, to the, to the manager to correct like the 20%. And that also, the phrase at the bottom of the last page, "Letter authored by Rod Senior and Ed Tinkell," be deleted. Uh, granted, they did draft it, but I think it's, comes from the cleageal body of the board.
Tony, the only thing that I see, I, I agree with that. I don't have any problem with all that. The only thing that we need to do is that if we do indeed pass this, uh, you guys got, got the Word document, we need to add the resolution number, uh, 2020 dash something in that first paragraph that, uh, completes the letter, uh, of the resolution of the board authorizing this.
That's correct, Mr. Tinkell. You're right.
Motion to approve the letter and authorize the chairman to sign.
With edits.
Yeah, with edits.
With what? I'm sorry.
With edits.
With, with, with edits.
Wait, can I ask a question?
Yes.
And you don't mind me editing those few little things?
I think, I think, I, I think those are appropriate little, uh, call grammatical type of, uh-
Okay, I just don't want to step on any toes. Okay. Thank you.
Motion second, we'll call for the vote. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkell?
Yes.
Supervisor Blumberg, Chair?
Yes.
Then we've got a five-vote vote, and I'll get Supervisor Flaherty to make the edits. We'll get that letter out directly.
And, and the next item is the resolution. With regards to it again, urging the county commission to, uh, have a traffic signal versus a roundabout. And once we get the number assigned, we'll insert that into the resolution. And that's ready for adoption if the board so chooses.
Is it, Tony, do we need to make a motion to approve that resolution?
Yes, sir.
We have a number, is it 2020-nine?
I don't know. I looked at Vicky and Marilyn for those.
I asked that question the other day. I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-dash-something to authorize the chair to sign the letter to the, uh, to Commissioner Pettigras.
I'll second that.
We should make a second and a discussion. Okay, call for the vote. Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkell?
Yes.
Chair Blumberg?
Chair says yes.
That's okay, five votes, resolution passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work on that, Ed. You and Rod did a good job.
Yes, Ed, could you also thank Mr. Senior too?
I will do that. He did most of the work. I just put the engineering together, and he looked smooth.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Tinkell's not that verbose.
There were not enough exclamation points.
District engineer, do you have anything?
I don't have anything on the agenda, but as it relates to the roundabout, I just wanted to make a clarification from the, as it's, as we're just discussing it, from, uh, the last board meeting. I received a call yesterday from a Lee County, um, staff member, uh, just asking for clarification on my comments. And I went back and listened to, uh, the video and, or the audio. And, uh, Mr. Tinkell had asked me if the intersection was changed to, from a roundabout design to a signal, if I felt the utilities would be, uh, have to be replaced, relocated. My answer was, I don't think so. However, I went on to explain that at that northeast corner, uh, the issue was both the water and the irrigation, and depending on the design, um, that, you know, something may have to, to take place there. They may need to be relocated. So just to clarify, just because we're going to, um, ask for a signalized intersection, and if they were to entertain that, just realize you may still have to do some effort. You may have to do, um, as much relocation.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get out of the-
Okay. So I just, I just want to clarify that, that as, as of now, no, I don't think so. If you're not doing asphalt, uh, work, however, just realize that, that, that could still be a possibility.
Margaret, a couple of questions, follow up on that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Chris, Chris has sent out some emails, and I don't know to what extent they went out. And I, uh, totally don't want to, uh, let's say disagree or argue with, with his position. We have some real vulnerabilities at that intersection, whether we go with a roundabout or a stoplight. Uh, the fact that we've got valves out there that don't work, those valves have got to be replaced, whether we go with a roundabout or we go with a traffic signalization. I think the issue is, is to, to what degree the extent of how much money we have to spend. I think the issue was, is that if we went with a roundabout, the number could be as high as a million dollars. Obviously, uh, changing eight to 10 valves might be a hundred, $150,000. It won't be a million dollars. Uh, it, the, the, the issue is, is that we're dealing with assets that are 25, 30, 35 years old. And I'm not gonna argue with our district manager that it would really be nice to change all that stuff, but it's not in our capital improvement plan right now. To me, the valves, and I'll be happy, uh, whichever, whichever way we go. But we do need to be talking about what Chris is talking about, and he's, I think he's warning us of things to come in the future. And that is, that intersection is, we are immensely vulnerable there. All of our pipes come together there, and they are old. So, uh, the issue is that, uh, even if we would be successful in win with, going with traffic signalization, we aren't out of the woods yet on the issues and the expenditures of money to make sure that we're good going forward for another 20, 30, 40 years.
Right, we understand. I think we understand. Um, Kathy, did you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Mr. Guy?
I, uh, think it would be wonderful to, uh, improve all of those items that, uh, Mr. Tinkell just mentioned to be good for another 20 or 30 or 40 years. But, uh, with the, uh, revenue that's gonna be coming in, uh, I'm hoping that we can get by the next 20 or 30 or 40 days. Thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Uh, nothing for me.
And I, and I'm good with the, the warning that our engineer and our district manager gave us. So let's move on to action items. And the first one is the acceptance of the audit.
Question?
Yes, go ahead.
Is Mr. Bloom still here?
No.
No.
No?
No, he's here.
He's, he's here.
Yes, I'm still here, sorry. It was unmuted.
Mr. Bloom, uh, isn't the audit supposed to be presented to the board? Not just given to us in a written form? They are supposed to do some kind of presentation? That was-
Yes. That is correct. We have, I have already spoken with, uh, Jay Gaines to get his availability. Uh, we wanted to get this audit, um, in front of the board, you know, so that you had plenty of time. And he is available, uh, to, uh, present at the, um, 18th. Um, so I just wanted to get this in front of the board and then confirm exactly what you're just asking, that the board, uh, wanted it, you know, him to present it.
Uh, Stevens, does this give enough time to send this to the state as required and meet the deadlines?
Absolutely. It's, uh, June 30th is the deadline. Um, you know, so we have plenty of time either way. We, we can certainly, uh, send them, um, a copy of this now, and if there were any issues later on, amend it. But either way, we have plenty of time.
Okay, thank you. I think it's cleaner to wait, but thank you.
Well, I, can I make a motion to table this until June 18th, when they do a presentation?
There we go, a motion, a second to table to the-
I will ask our attorney if that's appropriate. Do we need a motion?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay. Okay, Kathy made a motion to table this to June 18th for, uh, Jay Gaines to come in to, uh, make a presentation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further comment? Call the vote, Chris?
Supervisor Flaherty?
Yes.
Supervisor Guy?
Yes.
Supervisor Banks?
Yes.
Supervisor Tinkell?
Yes.
And Chair Blumberg?
Yes.
Motion passes. Oh, to table it till June 18th.
Next we have budget.
And, uh, the board would like to get, pardon, uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, staff perspective is our perspective and the number of, uh, the capital-
Hey, Chris, we're getting, Chris, we're getting a lot of feedback from you.
Is that better?
Yeah, I didn't, I, I couldn't understand anything you said.
Okay. If, um, the board would like, we've spent the, the last, uh, 10 days making significant cuts across the board to budget and all, for, and all. And like, we can go through those now, or I can send the spreadsheets to Stephen Bloom. Since we moved the, the 11th, uh, June 4th meeting, you could go through, go with a fine tooth comb, make any final cuts you'd like. But the cuts that we made, it brought the budget just about to last year's levels.
Okay, do you have a summary of those cuts that you made, Chris?
What I did with the, the budget sheet, I have it here online. I can go through and, like, I can bold it, the areas where we made cuts in, in all segments. And basically, what we did is, uh, took out all of the major capital projects that we had included in the high-dollar budget items, um, in every category. And, uh, across the board, and even into the capital improvements plan. And I'd be happy to go down the line if you'd like.
I'll, I'll ask the supervisors if they want to go through that now, or if you want updated spreadsheet- I'll, I'll ask the supervisors if they want to go through that now, or if you want updated spreadsheet from Chris.
Question? Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. I had the opportunity to go in and meet with staff, including Chris and Brian and Kenny. And I think they did their job of telling us what we need to do, what we need to be aware of going forward. I think they did a hell of a job doing that. We might not like, may not like what we saw, but I think it was a reality. There was nothing that I would want to argue with what our staff put together that we need to be looking forward to. That sometimes the pill's a little bitter to swallow, but we're, we're running a utility, and we've got to do it the right way. They did their job. And they've come back and cut it. And I think what they're looking at is a five-year plan to try to introduce some of these costs that need to be done and scattered out over a period of five years. Maybe it'll total 2.9 million. I don't know. The issue is, I didn't, I could not come up with a reason to object to anything that they said. I think they've done a hell of a job, and I'm ready to go proceed, proceed forward with what they have presented.
Supervisor Clarity, comments?
Yes, I did meet with Chris, and I do have the new budget where he reduced everything. I just don't know, because I don't have it from Stephen Bloom, what the EAUs would be. And that's kind of what I'm waiting for. And I don't know if Mr. Tinkle's talking about the old budget or the new one that they reduced.
He's talking about the old budget.
Okay. I'm looking at the new one that you reduced everything.
Yeah, everything that I looked at was based on the premise that I am not taking into consideration the assessment methodology that we may or may not adopt of how we collect the money to pay for it. I'm just looking right now at raw costs that they put together on both the OO1, OO2, and enterprise funds of costs that we need to anticipate for the next year.
Question? That's the original budget, not the one that they modified? Is that what you're talking about, Mr. Tinkle?
No, I'm, well, they originally came up with a budget of, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I think you were around 2.9 million, and you have significantly reduced that down to deferring some of the cost of future years to a new number.
Well, we did. And we also, even some of those five-year plans that we had, we took, we took those out of the budget to the five-year for the irrigation, the five-year, the first year for the street lighting was also removed. And we moved some money around to keep a significant, you know, line with the storm drain cleaning and repair, and also moved some money around to increase the budget for the pond bank maintenance, but moving dollars from existing items into that line item. But we basically have cut that budget right now to, it's about at last year's levels.
And I want to thank you for that.
And we could put that together and give it to Mr. Bloom. I could send him the spreadsheet and bring in what the assessment would be at that cut level. And you could always add some of those items in if you wanted to on the 11th. Right now, it's sort of kind of bare bones holding a line, but moving some dollars over to priority items for storm drain cleaning and pond bank maintenance.
Margaret, question?
Let me go to Mr. Guy first, please.
Okay.
Mr. Guy?
Thank you, Madam Sherman. I too think that the management has done a good job in reducing some of these things. But I had addressed, invite your attention to Agenda Page 131.
Can somebody scroll that up? Chris, can you scroll to 131?
Working on that right now.
Thank you.
And what's in the agenda was the existing budget that was handed out.
Right.
And we made the changes and pulled those out today. So what you're looking at on the agenda is the same, same budget we were talking about last time in the high end.
Bill, what's your question?
On, on page 131, on the first section, Landscape Services, almost all the way down to the bottom, we've got an eight-way Boulevard Irrigation, which is a five-year plan, $500,000. Now, I think I know what that entails. But I can't help but ask, is that something that we could put off for a year or so until we find out exactly how bad the finances of our residents are going to be as a result of this virus?
That, that line item was put in there because the estimate that we had for a complete redo of Gateway and Griffin irrigation system was $2.5 million.
You're awfully muddled up. Can you get a little closer to your microphone or something?
Okay, how's that? Is that better?
Better.
Yes, sir. The, that was the initial $2.5 million estimate to redo all of Griffin and Gateway Boulevard. And so we put $500,000 in for the first year of a five-year plan. And on our revised budget for all those five-year plans we had, including street lighting and some work on the soccer field replacement, those half million dollar items have been, this version, all been deleted. To go down to last year's budget levels or real close to it. We have some additional dollars we put in there for curb repair and road repairs, some due to the damage from the oak trees. But that budget right now is within 5% of last year, and all those big ticket items have been cut. We had $300,000 in there for park improvements to install some recreation facilities over the Commons School. That's been cut. So many of the new big expenditures have been removed from the second version of the budget.
Well, these big numbers have an impact on our residents' fees. And anything that you and others could do to keep these under control certainly would be appreciated. How about the lake maintenance number that goes up to $383,000 down near the bottom of that page?
Say that again, Bill.
Near the bottom of the same page, under Waterway Management Services, there's a lake maintenance number that increases $200, $208,000 to a total of $383, which also seems like a very big increase, still on page 131.
I don't, I don't see that. Can you get there, Chris?
Page?
I think you're off of 131. Yes, you are. You want to go back to 131?
I can't see.
It's 133, so maybe two.
There we go.
Go down.
Down a little bit. See, see that big increase of $208,000 to a total of $383 on lake maintenance?
Yes, sir, and that was.
Help me understand that, please.
Well, that item is because of increased maintenance that might be required depending on the pond standards, that increased cost due to spraying the weeds on the rock and the, and the corals. And what we did is our existing budget is $175,000. And we thought it would take approaching that $383. And what we've done in our most recent revised budget is we took the $125,000 that's in the existing budget for maintenance of littorals and excess of DO, and moved that to $175. So the new one has $300,000, but it's within the existing budget expenditures.
Bill, Bill, I think what he's doing there is taking what we have told them and what the ponds group has done, and we haven't made an approval on any of this stuff, then we really need to talk about it. But I think what he's trying to do is tell us, this is the dollar value that we have to put on the things that we have asked them to do. And this has been my concern since day one, that we're asking for a lot of stuff that costs a lot of money.
Thank you, Ed. I appreciate you saying that. I, now I understand how that's being presented. Thank you, Madam Sherman.
Chris, before I move to Mr. Banks, can you email out to all the supervisors version two so that we all have the updated version that you made the cuts in?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to. And what I can do too is convey that spreadsheet to Stephen. That way, by the June 4th meeting, it'll all be in a budget presentation with the assessment at that, at that lower end. And then if the board feels like they want to add some dollars to that, it might be easier than trying to cut dollars. Because what I have now, again, is a last year's expenditure proxy with just some minor increases in some priority areas versus where we put in all these large ticket items in the first version.
Oh, so a second version of this budget has not been created yet? That's still, you're still waiting on Stephen to do that? Is that right?
I did tell him. I was going to review it with the board today and, and then give it to him tomorrow to put the version together so you'd have something solid in front of you for June 4th. But now that that budget hearing's been pushed to the 11th, we'll have another shot at it on the 4th. So I would convey these spreadsheets to him with the new reduced budget, current funding levels. And then the board can have a shot at it on the 11th, to see, on the 4th, to see if they want to make increases for the bare bones.
Chris, I'm, I'm a little confused. Am I not looking at version one here?
You're looking at version one. It's on the screen.
Okay, what, what was Margaret referring to, version two?
That was what I was going to present today. I have on my alternate screen that I was going to go through today to show you where I, we made all the cuts in the budget to bring it back to existing funding levels.
And that's what, Chris, that's what I would like to have a copy of. And I'm going to assume that the other supervisor would also.
I'm, I'm confused. Are we, are we indicating that we're looking, or that we may be looking at a version two that is, for all intents and purposes, a status quo budget relative to what we really need?
Yes, sir.
Ah, that's a little risky.
Well, we can always add to it. I was just looking at the economic climate and a lot of the unknowns. So I'm presenting a budget that there's, that I have, that there's no increases compared to the last one I gave you that had multi-million dollar increases.
Well, I, I don't have any problem with looking at a version two, which would be a status quo, as long as I understand what got cut to make that happen.
Sure. I have all that's bolded in this version that I could send out to you.
Okay. Well, and I have no problem looking at that. I'm just saying that we're, we're responsible for running a utility. And all's I know is when you start doing these cuts, I've seen what happens here in Gateway. It comes back and bites you in the butt. Two, three, five years later, that's somebody that was trying to be nice burned somebody else later.
Well, I'll have to say, Mr. Tinkle, that the majority of those cuts are all in the OO1. The Enterprise Fund pretty much stays status where we're making a lot of progress and have the money and the budget funded to make the way we need to make. The OO1 fund, some of those big-ticket dollar items like the irrigation system, and some big ticket on the streetlights, road repairs, we brought that back to last year's levels.
I'll, I'll defer to staff on a lot of this stuff as far as making recommendations on making changes and cutting back. But I just don't want to get into the position that two years or a year down the road, we're in a position of having to make a huge increase because we made a bad decision this year.
Yes, sir. And under the 13 utilities in Southwest Florida, we're still right there between 12th and 13th. So if we have to make some additional expenditures and go to number 11, I really don't have any apologies for that. You know, if we need a regular increase, it would be mild.
Well, if, if you've got something. Go ahead, Margaret.
Chris, again, I'd just like the, the budget where you made the cuts to bring us back down to current levels. I'd like to have a copy of that, and I think the other supervisors would too. Not a spreadsheet that you're sending to Stephen, that's fine. But you are about to show us where a, a version of this where you had made the cuts. That's what I'd like to see. I want to compare it to the version that's in my board book.
And what I have in there too is I, on the full spreadsheet, I should show the original staff request on another column to the right, and then some notes we have. But all the areas where we made the cuts, you would see it's bolded across the board. So I'll get that out to all the board members tomorrow morning.
Chris, on a percent increase basis, the things that you're proposing that we need to look at and consider, what kind of percent increase would you be recommending for 2021 over and beyond 2020? 2%? 3%? What?
When we, what you're looking at right now is about a 30% increase, that original budget where we put in all those big dollar items.
Yeah. When we took those out and came back to the number, what are you at now with your revision?
About 3%.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Yes, thank you. Couple things. First, I do agree, Margaret, we need to get a copy of the version two. But also, I'd like to see the five-year plan breakdown. I think, Chris, I've heard you mention it, and I believe that's what you're building off of, of what was done either last year or the year before when we, when we started doing the CIP five-year plan. And that should be an organic living document. Because what I would like to do is, you know, everything that you put, you know, the kitchen sink in version one should be represented on that five-year plan. Version two, what you've pulled out should also be represented on that five-year plan. So I think we need to have some open discussion on, on those items. I appreciate staff pulling out, you know, some of the items for reconsideration. Because, because version one was, again, it was a kitchen sink budget. But I think we need to have the conversation around those items to determine what is the priority? What is the potential impact of not doing something today versus, you know, doing it today? There are some items that I think should have some very viable conversation, especially around irrigation versus, let's say, lighting updates. We could probably wait a year to get started on the lights. But irrigation, there might be some things that are critical for us to, to get started on because of the, of the aging of the irrigation system and the likelihood of some failures that could be even more costly if we, if we prolong. So I think that's what you guys have done, and I appreciate it. But I want to see the five-year plan in addition to where you made the budget adjustments. And then just going back to the item that Bill had called out around the, the lake maintenance, for things like spraying and some of those areas, that $208,000 increase, is that your, our vendor cost, or is that potentially in-house capability cost?
That's vendor cost. And we're looking at some, you know, in-house ability to do some spraying and things like that. But when the board had the last vendors in, you know, the, the second bidder that came in was about $375,000. And the question was posed to him, why is it so much? And his response was, because that's what it takes to do the job right. And we have to agree, and we're encountering additional costs in lake bank maintenance. And, you know, with the weeds that are coming up, and people have aesthetic concerns with that, and additional costs to maintain the lake banks. We're also doing a better job of fixing them. You know, we found some big crater holes behind Comcast that we went in and repaired, and that was $3,000. So it depended on what the level of service is and the pond bank standards. We all know that we need to trim those littorals back to DO levels. And right now, we have that out to bid at three different contractors because we have $125,000 in the budget. And we also put out last week to bid for spring, all those ponds that have rock. And in the next week, we'll have bids, and we requested those bids from our current contractor. And we also asked two other contractors. And we also asked two other contractors.
Yeah, so let's continue down that path. I think when you look at, you know, spraying and even lake maintenance, you know, that is one of those types of jobs that, you know, we might be able to build in-house for significantly cheaper than what a vendor would cost potentially. And that's just, I'm making an assumption here. I don't, I'm not an expert in that area, but that is a possibility. And I think other than that, I think we're all going to be very sensitive to keeping the budget as flat as possible due to the current environment. That's why I think we're going to have to maybe look at some of those critical CIP items versus some what I consider BAU areas. And we might have to move some stuff around. Just for example, if there's some, you know, irrigation versus adding littorals, that, you know, could be a conversation. And I'm only using that just as a hypothetical, but there may be some horse trading that might have to occur there. And then on that five-year plan too, Chris, I'm not sure if you guys, if you include your five-year plan, CIP versus O and M, major projects like lakes or irrigation, that type of stuff. So if you do have items that are, you know, big-ticket items that fall outside of CIP but might fall into more maintenance, it would be nice for us to get a view on that as well. But that's all that I have.
Margaret, question?
Yes, Mr. Tinkle, go ahead.
Chris, Doug brings up a good point. Some of the things that we're talking about relative to the pond maintenance, we kind of veered away because of the COVID and all the other issues. At one time, we were going to have a workshop on the entire idea of developing or approving and reconsidering the work that Flavia and her committee did. I think we're getting away from that, and we probably ought to go back to it because that sets the standard on the basis of which, how we do stuff. So I really think that we need to get back to the idea of having that workshop on the pond standard so as that that sets a goal or points us in a direction of how we want to handle this lake maintenance and pond maintenance.
Yes, sir. And we really were just waiting until we could have a big public hearing with the public and bring that back up. And we're certainly hoping for June, you know, to do that like June 18th.
I'd love to think that, but I'm going to guess it's going to be a long way beyond June 18th.
Well, we may gather at the soccer field then.
I'm sorry.
Over at the school.
Well, we just have to fight the love bugs and have the meeting. So I really think that what that committee did sets the groundwork on how we do this stuff. I think we're guessing if we do anything else, we need a guideline on how to follow doing this pond maintenance. And I think we're making a mistake if we don't have a plan of how to proceed. And I think that committee did a good job. I think we need to have the meeting that we were supposed to have back in, what was it, March? And we've never had it. So I think Flavia and the people on that committee did a hell of a job. I think we need to have a discussion of that because that sets the ground on how we go forward. This $383,000, I think, is largely based upon the decisions that they've made and the recommendations they're making.
Yes, sir, on that bare bones, we moved the money and it's $300,000 is what we have in that bare bones budget coming forward, not 383. So it is an increase without impacting the budget. And that's from priority areas, shifting, you know, money into the pond maintenance.
Got you.
Anything else, Mr. Tinkle?
No.
Okay, and on that note, I think Chris has traction of where he wants to go. I'm looking forward to looking at the updated bare bones spreadsheet printout of all these, all of this to compare it. I'd like to compare it to what we have in the board book. So with that in mind, we're at supervisor comments. Mrs. Flaherty.
Margaret, this is.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to have a little time, just, you know, two or three minutes, just to inform the board about something about the OO2 budget.
Okay.
The numbers, the numbers you have in your, in your book are off. There was one other expenditure that we didn't get into our budget, and the expenditure is about 93, a little over $93,000. Because we have, we have agreed. I'm sorry about the phone ringing in the background. We have agreed with the, or tentatively agreed with the Pelican Preserve Community Association to start paying, we, in the past, we have never paid them for the work they do to administer our O and M budget, budget between the CDD and the Pelican Preserve Community Association. We have never paid them for the work they do. And we have now agreed that we will pick up the tab for the work they do for us. That will cost us in the next fiscal year about an extra $93,000. But it's important to understand that they will then lower their assessments by exactly the same amount so that the residents of Pelican Reserve will not pay any more in total. It will just shift money from one pocket to the other. The expenses will go into the CDD and come out of the Pelican Reserve Community Association budget. And we will need to revise our O and M agreement to reflect what we're, what we are going to propose doing. So with that, right now, we have some cutting to do on our budget. But currently, it would be up about 5.7% with this new expenditure in it. We're going to do some more cutting, but we have to recognize that that $93,000 is in part going to be offset by assessments being lowered by the community association. So I just wanted to inform the board about that.
Well, I'd recommend that you get the information to Chris Shoemakers. You can get it to Stephen Blum if there's going to be any changes. So that it's part of the adoption of the budget.
And Stephen already has the numbers that we really wanted to have in this particular budget. There was a little bit of, we didn't get them in, but they, he already has them. So we will be in a position to show the budget as we actually want it to be.
And I can include that going out tomorrow because I do have those numbers in that final budget. I was at the feedback meeting last week, and Stephen has revised the budget, also the Stony Brook budget. So I'll include those with the package on to the supervisors tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Question, Margaret?
Back to supervisor comments. Mrs. Flaherty.
Yeah, I did. I had another question on the budget. Mr. McColloch is not there. I had a question on the Stony Brook budget. Is there any way we can have him at the next meeting so I can ask the question?
You can ask it. I don't know if anybody will be able to answer it.
Well, no, I need to ask him. So is there some way I can have, can Joe be at the next meeting, Mr. McColloch?
Certainly, or you can contact him directly.
Okay. And the only other comment I had was about the pond workshop. And that was answered. Thank you. Oh, one more. Happy Memorial Day.
Mr. Guy?
I have nothing. I have nothing.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just two things. One, just wanted to let the board know and to get everyone's nod on this that since Frank's departure, he was responsible for the employee survey. It did partially go out, I think it did go out. But I've asked Chris to, Chris has had to terminate that version because there were, there were a couple of things that we wanted to deliver or make some changes. So I'm going to be sending out the survey to all the staff. So what I'm going to do is, and I want to address the board before I push that to get everyone's agreement in the process. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to draft a letter to send to Chris, for Chris to send out to staff outlining how the survey is going to be delivered. So the questions and everything will be the same that we've all, that we've all seen. The delivery mechanism will work like this. It's almost very similar to what we do for HOAs and proxies. So I'm going to send, each staff member will get a packet. And the packet will have an envelope with a survey inside with a return envelope. So the staff member will, they'll, each packet will be named with the staff member. And Chris sent me all the information of all the staff members, so I have all that. So the staff member will have the survey, they'll complete it, they will take it, put it in the envelope. That envelope will be addressed to me. I'll get all the, all the results, compile them, and then bring a summary back to the board with feedback. The reason for this is, one, so we can have, so the staff can feel comfortable about putting their feedback. It'll be anonymous. And two, just I've got some experience around this. I'll put the, not only the summary together, but if there's areas of opportunity, I'll put some recommendations down, and then we can all agree to those. So if no one has an issue with that, I will get that kicked off next week. And then hopefully, we can give them about two weeks, which should align with our next board meeting. We should have the results that I can deliver. Any issues with that approach?
Mr. Banks?
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
I was recognizing when those materials come to you, you'd be receiving them in your capacity as a board member, so they are public records at that point in time. And so, okay, try to make sure.
Yeah, and Tony, if we need to, if we need to house those or, you know, even hand them off to you to make them accessible, if need be, let me know. And we can talk about the details if that's.
Very good.
Okay, so if there's no issues, great. The other thing I just wanted to bring up is, so recently, the CDC has released updates and statements around COVID. And they have determined that that coronavirus does not spread easily via contaminated surfaces as opposed to what the original thought was. So this virus, we're learning more about it every day. We've got a lot of experts on it. There are some assumptions that were made early that had not been scientifically backed up or they've been kind of debunked. So with that being said, I think our governor's pushed forward with the get back to normal strategy and opening up various phases for people to get back to general life. With that being said, I would personally recommend that we, that we open up our amenities. That would include the pool, the dog park, the field usage. Now, again, I think there should be some caveats, and we should be operating under, you know, responsible requirements. But I think if we use common sense here and do offer some, let's call it, you know, some fundamental principles for those usage, I don't see any reason why we can't get back to, at least to something that's in parallel with what's happening across the state and what's being supported by the CDC.
Chris, would you like to address that? Because I know you've stepped, you've kept up with what Lee County is doing, and we've kind of pretty much parroted them.
Yeah, well, we're following the Lee County, and they're opening tomorrow, and so are we. It's, there are a lot of limitations on it, but we plan on opening up the fields, the athletic fields. We plan on opening up the pool. The pool, according to the county, is still a Tuesday through Saturday, nine to four for lap swimmers and working out. And time limits on the pool, that's going to be real hard to manage. Same thing on the soccer fields, you know, groups larger than 10 together. But following those county leads, our gates are opening tomorrow. We still have those limitations, difficulties in force. We opened the dog park when the county opened theirs. But moving forward tomorrow morning, we've been getting the pool ready to go. And we've made a lot of improvements in the downtime with things, the blocks and everything looks real nice.
Okay, well, that's good then. Great. That's it for me.
Anything else, Doug?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Tinkle?
Yeah, the only thing I have is I talked to Chris and staff when I was in there going over the budget. And it was a little concerned about some of the allocations of monies. I just want to make sure that Phil and Bob are aware that some of the costs that are being allocated into the OO1 budget for the flowway maintenance doesn't have a PP allocation, which I believe it should have to the tune of maybe the one-third, two-thirds that we have talked about or the common flowway and any of the other flowways that are not associated with Gateway then would be a Pelican Reserve allocation 100%. I think that needs to be addressed. Other than that, I think staff's done a hell of a job putting this budget together. They told us what we need to know, may not be what we like to want to hear. But I think they have done their job in telling us, and I think coming up with a five-year plan or something to the nature of spreading this money out over time. The needs that they have talked about are definitely there. They're real. They're not imaginary. Needs to be done. They've done their job. So I really think staff's done a hell of a job in putting together the budget. But I just want to make sure that the allocations are such that they're defendable to everybody.
Hey, Margaret, I did have one more thing, if you don't mind.
Anything else? Yeah, go ahead, Doug.
And I'm sorry, I skipped over this. I do want to encourage all the board members, anyone who is not in, was not in a position to approve the assessment methodology today, that you get with Russ or whoever to kind of vet those items through to either further educate yourself or for us to be able to educate residents that are coming to us with questions. If, because I do think there is opportunity for us to move forward for two reasons. One, I think we need to have a methodology that we can support and justify. And two, we have limited means of revenue generation. And when we look at how much work needs to be done, you know, moving forward, we're going to have to, you know, figure out ways to fund those. And this is definitely one of those, one of those ways that I think has minimal impact or at least an impact that we can justify easier than maybe just raising assessments for the purpose of raising assessments. So that's what I would just encourage all the board members to do. If you have questions, if you're not sure, get with Russ to talk through those. And maybe there's some, you know, a pathway for us to getting this, getting this done. And I would encourage Chris, if it's possible, I think Jim had a lot of points that, you know, I could agree with on the surface, but again, I don't know enough about it to be able to challenge him on it. If the board doesn't have an issue, I'd love to be able to even open up Russ to Jim where he can have some very, you know, direct conversation. If no one has a problem with that, I, I don't know if we can do that. We're not going to be able to do that for every resident, but I think if Jim has some expertise in this area, and he might be one of those individuals that could help us, you know, squash or come up with some, you know, some alternatives based on the vote of public opinion, it's something we should probably look into. Now, Doug?
May I comment on that briefly? We've been, we've been working and putting Jim and Russ together. And Russ has provided him this model and a lot of his data. That's where Jim gets all his inside information. And one thing we did was sent out the executive summary and the report. But what I'm going to follow up with tomorrow is send out the presentation that Russ made to the board. It's a lot easier. a lot easier to understand that methodology that way, and I think that'll be a big help with the residents and the HOA management companies.
And if there's restrictions on that, I get it, you know, if we want to limit, you know, who Russ needs to talk to, all that, I completely understand that, so.
Okay, that brings it to me, and I don't have any supervisor comments, so I'm going to call this meeting adjourned, it is 6:51, have a good holiday weekend, everyone.
Thank you.